We order a stand for what? What allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess probably like go in here. You boss any place around? Yeah. Do you have any amendments that you?
I'm so sorry, I do, I have a cemetery plot.
I have one. I'd like to open the meeting at executive session personnel.
For the cemetery deal?
No, executive session. Personnel. We've got two then, we've got two amendments, cemetery plot and personnel in the executive session. Could be motion for both of them. That would be fine. There's a second, a second. All in favor? Aye. No, opposed. Okay, cemetery plot will be in the business. That's okay with everyone? I think for just a second, Jeff made a suggestion, I think it's a good one, we'll do number six, five minutes to pump the comment.
Yeah, we got some public.
There is no problem.
My car's home.
Well, I'm here representing a couple of committees, one, the Concerts in the Park Committee, and also Subcommittee of the Downtown Revitalization Committee that we had the past year with the D and K study. And what we've been doing is meeting fairly regularly, and our focus is on safety. And we really don't want to see the D and K report get buried for another forty years and have to do another one then, and we're all dead. So what we would like to do is just put a little bug in your ear, since we know it's budget time, for two things, actually one thing but in two parts. One, lighting in the park. The Concert Committee did collaborate with the town and we had a study done, and it called for about sixteen lights in the park. We feel that the price on that was a little high, and we think we can get that well under the original one hundred twenty-five thousand dollar price tag on that particular study. Yeah, the second part is, and it's dealing with the parking lot in front of the Baptist Church, the south end of the park, and you know, getting a different either flow pattern or parking arrangement, or even putting some green space in between there. We don't want, we're not, our goal is not to lose any parking spaces, but our goal is to really get that a lot safer. There's a lot of cement there, and no, people will go three or four different directions, you know, you've got no stop signs, no caution signs, no anything signs down there, except for coming up the hill from Fair Haven Inn.
Well, there's another one on the end by two of our other county courts.
Yes, but right there, there's only that Fair Haven Inn, but there's, you can come from three other directions. And only that Fair Haven Inn coming up the hill has a stop sign. So there, those are some issues that we'd really like to address, hopefully in that new space down on the south end will also have some lighting there as well, because again, it's pretty dark. Anything else to add?
I think, I think that that particular space, the parking space there, is the easiest one to adopt first, and it'll give people an idea of what is possible.
Right, right. And we think it'll be a lot safer, you know, and you know, we might need some signage that would, you know, that people know that there's going to be a new traffic route or flow pattern, something like that, get people prepared for that. But I think that if we make sure that we don't lose any parking spaces, because that's a huge area, and a lot of people park where there aren't really parking spaces, like in front of the funeral home and in front of the Baptist Church. And really, there are no parking spaces there, so that really blocks that throughway as well. So that's what we want to do, we want to meet periodically, and we're willing to help the select board in any way we can, but safety is our primary concern, and we really want to address those two issues, since we've gone to, you know, the town's gone to great expense with that D and K study, and we really want to take advantage of the recommendations they made to us. Thank you.
Just to talk to Danny Gray about the lighting in there, and him and I are working, trying to get it so it's not quite so expensive.
Right. I know, it was originally a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and a large part of that was, you know, the work CV has to do, running wires and things like that, so I mean, if we could do it on solar. We didn't really want to, they didn't really recommend solar, and the reason they didn't recommend solar is because there's too much tree cover.
Too much tree.
But it could be in the parking lot.
Because I have found some solar lights, they're not real fancy, but they would like. I mean, that's, I was going to ask if that was something that you guys were interested in, or do you?
Well, we haven't gotten to the part really about what the lights will look like.
Okay.
It's more the fact that how are we going to approach it, you know, and can we at least get something in the budget to help us, you know, even, I mean, once we get a little farther along, we're more than happy, I mean, some of us, like Judy here, someone has been researching the cost of different lights, you know, solar and electric, so. But again, most of the, and you know, we even talked with Joe, and you know, tree cover's probably not going to be, allow us to do much with solar in the park, because we just can't get them that high.
All right, yeah, I mean, the running the wires, I think we'd just better rent a ditch which and put our own.
Yeah, I plug that part of physics with electricity, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the person to ask about that, but you know.
Yeah, like I said, I asked Danny.
I plug it in, it goes, that's all I know.
Him and I were trying to get a price together for you guys to see what it's really going to cost to get lighting in there, so.
When you were, when you were talking about money in the budget, like we had the grant, the three thousand dollars, which we were doing that, are you thinking something, you see, now we are talking budget story, you thinking you need that kind of, like, three thousand dollars for your Subcommittee to do some things to continue on, or?
I know, no, no.
Are you talking, are you talking a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, we're hoping it's not a hundred thousand dollars, but we're talking the cost of lighting.
You're talking big money, not little, because I think you can do a lot with a little sometimes.
Well, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can get some grant funding, you know, I, maybe not me, I think the town would be the ones who would have to apply for that funding, but I think there are monies out there, and I know there's some money currently in the budget for grant matching, so, and then, of course, Concerts in the Park Committee have already earmarked twenty-five thousand dollars for the project, which is a nice chunk of change, so.
Okay. Let's figure out where the logical place to talk about this in the budget, make sure these guys are here for that discussion. And I'm not exactly sure where it's, right off the top of my head.
We're all more than happy to come.
Appropriations, something like that, maybe, I don't, yeah, I don't know, but yeah. Well, let's, let's not, let's not let this thing, I agree that we don't want.
It gets pretty dark in the park towards the end of the, towards the end of the summer. And it'd be nice to be able to use that park for more than just Concerts in the Park, you know, National Night Out, those kinds of events, where we can, you know, use the park to its full potential.
Any questions? Anyone else, Mr. Reddy, this probably would be?
Okay, I was coming see if we could hire your police department for two nights, just for our hayride, be Friday and Saturday night.
This, Tom?
Yeah.
What's everybody's?
We've got, we've done in the past.
Yep.
Quite a few years.
Do you need a motion?
You have to talk to the sheriffs, you probably do it right here too.
I've been using Fair Haven.
It's nice, nice community thing. If you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion if we do the hayride.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion?
It's starting to being a good community. Working together, it's nothing to do with, no one's going to get rich on the money.
Yep. All those are fair?
Aye.
Those are both? Yes. Thank you. All right, now, let's get back to the agenda. The wastewater bond informational session is supposed to start at seven oh three. We're a little off, but not bad. And we have twenty-five minutes. I guess I should make sure nobody else has got five minutes, because that was your last here. Okay, good. All right, so wastewater bond informational session. There will be another one.
Yes, yep.
Not a lot of people here.
Do you want, do you want?
I'm not sure.
The official is October twenty-ninth, we have to be within ten days of the vote, so we couldn't do it after noon. Do you want to do the PowerPoint presentation tonight, for the people with a camera?
It might help because TV's here, and if you guys want to do that, and then people can ask questions at any point, or, it's already doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So anyways, there, we have PowerPoint, just give us an idea of what we're looking at.
No.
No, it's the fifth.
November fifth is the vote, October twenty-ninth is the official public right. That's a Tuesday.
The first Tuesday after the first month.
And October nineteenth is also the, anyone who wants to tour the wastewater plant?
Yep, and October nineteenth is the.
Regular, just have all the things that they want to see.
I can read that.
That's okay, Josh. Good, okay, perfect, okay. So if anybody has questions, you want them to jump in as you go, that's fine, okay? So this is the overview of the Fair Haven Wastewater Treatment Facility. We have, West Street is up here, and this is a section, a mound given, flow comes into the headworks, continues into the selector. This is the oxidation ditch, which was built, that structure back in the late nineteen-sixties, where the biological portion of the treatment is done. Then we have the two secondary clarifiers, then it's disinfected, and the treated effluent is discharged out to the river. These are sludge storage tanks, maintenance building garage, and this is the, this is the control building. So a little bit of history, the original plant was built in the late sixties, nineteen sixty-eight, primarily included the structure for the oxidation ditch, you can see here. Back in the late eighties, nineteen eighty-nine, it was upgraded to secondary treatment, so that's when the majority of the work was done. So what's really important theme as we go on here, some parts of that plant are fifty years old, and other parts of the plant are already thirty years old. There was a phosphorus removal upgrade that was done back in two thousand, and that was completely paid for with state grant funds. Again, nineteen eighty-nine, the treatment plant was upgraded, nineteen ninety-five, a twenty-year evaluation was completed, I actually did that, and the intent of that was to try to set the plan up so it was good for, you know, another twenty years. Nothing significant that needed to be done at that time, so the town was in pretty good shape. Again, the majority of the plant wasn't that old, it was only six or seven years old, so nothing really all that critical that needed to be done. Two thousand nineteen, the town chose to do the, or required by permit, to do another twenty-year evaluation. The town went through a qualifications-based selection process for consultants, that's a state requirement, and by doing that, the town qualifies for fifty percent loan subsidy on the engineering fees. We started that back in May of two thousand eighteen. We are in pretty good shape on it the end of last year, and then the town chose to also look at possibly consolidating with the Castleton Wastewater Facility, so that took a little bit of time. Then we went through a state review process, and the final report was issued in August of two thousand nineteen. So purpose and needs, this is the control building, pretty dated, kind of in rough shape, you know, that dates back to the late nineteen-sixties. Equipment has served the town very well, the plant has been very, very well operated, it performs very well, it doesn't show its age from a performance standpoint, but the aging components do need to be replaced to reduce the failures and cost of repairs. Typically, we assume the equipment has a useful life of twenty years, we can sometimes get to twenty-five or even thirty years with good maintenance practices, but it is thirty years old, so we're at the end of that timeline. The ditch structure, which was built in the late nineteen-sixties, hasn't been drained and inspected since the late nineteen-eighties. That is a critical part of the treatment process, and there isn't any way to take that out of service and inspect that, or do any repairs, and still comply with the state discharge permit. The last piece, again, we need to replace the equipment at the end of its service life, because the town, the state wants to make sure the town can continue to operate reliably for the next twenty-plus years. We want to provide consistent compliance with the discharge permit, and if something fails, like with the ditch, the town could be subject to fines, discharge, you know, water quality can negatively impact the Castleton River, there's some electrical issues with waters in the structures, there's some code compliance safety issues, and we want to upgrade the computer systems to provide automated monitoring, control the facility, which is pretty standard this day and age, but it wasn't thirty years ago. This is the headworks, and primarily the purpose of the headworks, we call preliminary treatment, that's where the larger grit, the solids are removed as it comes into the plant. Typically, there's screening also, but there isn't screening at the Fair Haven facility, and what the screening can do is it removes the organics, inorganic material, the plastics, rubber, those kind of things that we see more and more today. This is, of course, bar rack here that removes, again, the larger materials. This is part of the grit removal system that removes the larger solids, that's disposed of separately. This equipment here is thirty, thirty years old. We are looking as part of the project to add screening, and this is a similar photo or view of what that unit would do, and again, that removes the inorganic stuff out of the flow stream, which is much better for the process down. Currently, it just stays in there, and it ends up in the sludge and everything, which makes it more difficult to dispose of, and it can plug pumps and things like that. This is the oxidation ditch, where the majority of the biological treatment happens, and again, the structure is fifty years old, town's got more than its useful life out of it, we really can't take it out of service for any length of time, or any time at all to continue to utilize that structure. These are the secondary clarifiers, these are thirty years old, the equipment, you know, even though the beams and all that look in pretty good shape, we've taken these down here, you can see and inspected these, and a lot of the interior components do need to be replaced. Again, there is redundancy here, but this is thirty years old, and it's, it's at, or it's approaching its useful life. And when we're talking about useful life here, the other thing to keep in mind here too, is this project, even though we started it within the last year, it's going to take three or four years to get through that, you know, to get through a bond vote, get through the design engineering permitting, you know, and in at least a year plus of construction. So we're talking another three or four years, even before the stuff is really refurbished and back to where it should be, so we're talking about really more than thirty years here. Some of the age-related improvements, you know, there's things like steps that have settled, these are very unsafe, they're tilted, kind of a trip hazard for the operators, and you can see pumps and other equipment, really, it's just dated. And the problem with a lot of this equipment is if it fails, you know, it's not the kind of thing where you can call up and get something on your doorstep tomorrow. Some of this stuff may take eight weeks or three months, and so it's really challenging for it to be out of service for an extended period of time. So this is just a little bit about how, when we go through the treatment facility and the needs, this is really kind of a list on the left here of what the major components are, and generally, what we do is we break this down and say, what is absolutely critical that needs to be done in the next couple of years? You can see the majority of what we have here really needs to be done in the next two to five years, and as I mentioned previously, it takes that long to get through the bond vote, get through the engineering, you know, get through the construction process, so this is really the window that we're at here. And you can see the good news is there really isn't much out over six or ten years, so we're able to really address the majority of the priorities with this project. So one of the things the state requires that we do is we do have to look at alternatives, and we look at this very, very detailed, we look at the, do a technical analysis, so we look at the advantages, disadvantages, we come up with costs, we look at capital costs, we have to look at the projected operation and maintenance costs, they require that we do a lifecycle analysis, and basically, all of these options, except for number one, which we really couldn't find to be workable, so we didn't pursue that any longer. Number two, the eration tanks with the secondary clarifiers proved out to be the most effective and most cost-effective approach for the town moving forward. As I mentioned previously, one of the things that the town wanted to do is, because the treatment plant's a little bit underutilized, it's permitted for five hundred thousand gallons per day of capacity, and like a lot of Vermont communities, you know, you get declining populations, so not all that capacity is required anymore, so the thought was, let's look and see if we can't pair this with Castleton, and see if we can't consolidate and take the treatment plant for Fair Haven out of service, and pump the wastewater over to Castleton for treatment. So this is pretty, pretty extensive, unfortunately, the Fair Haven wastewater plant is at the very west end of town, so it requires abandoning the treatment plant, setting up, still having the headworks here, and pumping all of this flow from here, out West Street, basically through the entire town and along four A. We came up with three or four challenges that made this quite a bit more expensive. One of them is just the length of the forest maintenance was required. Castleton actually has a municipal sewer out to the south end of Balmazine, out to the Hydeville area. Unfortunately, the sewer infrastructure in this area of four A wasn't large enough to be able to accept the flow from Fair Haven, so we had to bypass all of that and bring it all the way up to Castleton Corners. Castleton just barely replaced the sewer line in this area of Route Thirty down to the treatment plant, so that's in good shape. The other challenge we had is that the Castleton treatment plant is about the same age, and they're looking at an upgrade project, and the other part of that is that they didn't have enough permitted capacity to take the Fair Haven flow and what the current flows are for Castleton with expanding the treatment facility, so those three or four things really made the capital costs really pretty significant, and it didn't make it affordable, and we compared to the option of just upgrading the Fair Haven treatment plant at its current site. But it was a good exercise, it was a good kind of thing to look at, consolidation can work, and it does work in many cases, and it can make some sense, but again, the numbers just didn't bear that out. Kind of already talked about this, but this is just a little bit of the limitations here that we had. Total project costs, we were looking at about eleven million dollars, so we had to go out thirty or forty years before we kind of saw that break-even point. So that was going to put a significant burden on the Fair Haven sewer customers over the next twenty years, because you had to cover the debt retirement for all this infrastructure, then you were going to have to pay Castleton to treat the flow, so it took a long time to get that kind of cost-effective intersection point. So this is the upgrade project is proposed for the Fair Haven wastewater plant, we're major work here in the headwork structure, the oxidation ditch is going to be abandoned, again, that's a fifty-year-old structure, building two brand-new cast-in-place concrete eration tanks for the biological treatment. We're going to reuse the concrete structure for the secondary clarifiers, retain, replace all the internal components, then we're going to do some significant renovation of the control building, PLC controls for the entire plant, heating, ventilation, electrical upgrades. Then down in the blower building, new equipment replacement, needed to upgrade the implant pump station, so pretty much touching the majority of the stuff on the plant, very significant project. Just another summary of what we're doing here, most of this is age-related, again, it's to replace items that are thirty years old and even fifty years old. One of the big things here, which is pretty standard for most of these treatment plants, is what we call a SCADA telemetry, is the operator's can sit on there and pull the screens up, they can monitor what's going on in the plant, they can dial in, they can check it on their phone off-hours, and that's really kind of where everybody's at nowadays. Fair Haven doesn't have anything close to that, other than if, if a pump fails or something happens, they get an alarm, and that means they've got to kind of come to the site and check it out, see what the problem is, but now that can all be done remotely, and in some cases, can shut a piece of equipment on, you know, and avoid having to come in off-hours to, just to make sure things are still running properly. So this is the estimated construction cost, and what we do is we're projecting a start construction of the spring of two thousand twenty-one, so we, we extend that out using what we call the INR Cost Index, it's really a annual kind of cost adjustment. The headworks includes a new screen, an upgrade of all the age-related things, so about nine hundred thousand. The biological treatment includes the two new eration tanks and the secondary clarifier upgrades, about three million, and the remaining age-related refurbishment with the control building, the blower building, electrical pumps, those kind of things, about nine hundred ninety thousand, so just barely under five million for the total construction cost. Then what we do is we come up with a total project cost, and total project cost includes a ten percent construction contingency, which the state requires, includes engineering costs for putting contract documents together, all the disciplines, it includes the bid construction phase services startup, then we have administration, permit fees, legal short-term interest, so we're looking at a total project cost of six point five million, and that's the recommended bottom out at six point five million. So the available funding sources out there, there is money available from the state, this project is on the priority list, and that's going to be renewed in January of two thousand twenty. Their loan program can be a twenty or thirty-year term, it's a two percent interest rate. As I mentioned previously, the town does qualify for up to fifty percent of the engineering costs, it's actually a maximum of a hundred thousand a year, so we're assuming that the town would receive about two hundred thousand dollars there. Then they also have what they call a pollution control grant, so this project would receive about ten percent of the total project cost in pollution control grant, repayment would start one year after substantial completion. For the town of Fair Haven, because of the median household income and the sewer rates, a joint-funded project really is more favorable from a funding standpoint, so it's really going to be USDA, that's rural development's going to provide, they're a federal agency, the majority of the funding, their loan term is going to be thirty years. The good news on the interest rate is the interest rates keep coming down, and just in the last six to nine months, this is actually down to two and three eighths percent, so that's great news. The town is eligible for up to a forty-five percent grant, just a caution, you probably wouldn't see, receive forty-five percent, we've assumed twenty-five percent. This can be coupled with the state pollution control grant, and the application has to go in December of each year, so that's due December eleventh, so if the bond vote passes, we'll pretty quickly. So if the bond vote passes, we'll pretty quickly jump into that because they're on the federal fiscal year, which starts October 1st. So that application needs to get in December so we can get lined up for the funding on that.
I think it's important to say, we can't apply for that until after a successful bond.
Yeah, so they can't actually issue you a funding offer, formal funding offer until you have a positive bond vote. And you're right, Bob, you have to have the application in at about the same time so they can issue that funding offer when you, you know, after the bond vote.
Yep.
So this is generally what we're looking at for the possible funding scenario. The good news is out of the 6.5 million, the town's eligible. And this could even, number could go up, but we tried to be conservative, if anything, for about 2.5 million. This would be the state loan subsidy on the engineering. It would include the 10% pollution control grant. And it would also include the USDA grant. So for going down through the funding, the loan from USDA would be currently about 2.8% interest at thirty years. We're projecting 200,000 in loan subsidy, which means the town doesn't have to pay that back to the state. 650,000 for a pollution control grant. Then from USDA, roughly a 25% grant, 1,625,000. About $4 million in loan, again, that's thirty years, at roughly the 2.8s. Annual loan payment is estimated at about 190,000. And the increase in the sewer rates would be a little bit under $60. We're projecting at 59. And we're trying to be conservative here. You know, hopefully the town gets a little bit more grant money from the state. And if they do, I mean, from USDA, and if they do, this number's gonna decrease accordingly.
Is that $59 per quarter?
Yep, yep, yep.
And that's actually, what, seven dollars less?
A little bit. That's right. Yep.
In the wrong direction, directionally correct. Is that always?
Yeah. Yep.
But that's strictly on the sewer.
That's correct. That's right. Yeah. That's, that assumes the bond, the debt, annual loan payment is on the sewer customers. Exactly, yep. So project schedule, bond votes in November. If it passes, we'd start final design soon thereafter. Complete design in December 2020. It does take that long, but one of the things we're really trying to do is get the project out to bid early 2021. You know, when bidding is favorable, the town can get better pricing versus having that slide in later into the spring and the summer. And we're really looking at a full construction year of 2021. And they'll have to come back in the spring of 2022 to finish things up. So, you know, it's a, it's a three or four-year window by the time we, the town gets through this whole process. So, okay? Any questions?
So the ditch is gonna be gone?
It's gonna be abandoned. We haven't really figured out, you know, if we just leave that as is. Yeah, it's gonna be drained. It's gonna be drained. You know, we'll obviously take all the electrical equipment out. That's what's safe. That's something we'll have to figure out. You don't wanna spend a lot of money just trying to ban that stuff. It could be filled in. One of the things, if the timing works out, when we're digging for the eration tanks, you know, that material could be put off to the side or off-site. And that could be brought back so we could fill that ditch in and just level that area. So, and if we did, what we generally would do is punch holes in the bottom of it because we don't want it to hold water and be unsafe. We want it to be kind of self-draining. We don't have any other purpose for it at this point, but that's something that we worked through through the design, design process with.
There's no value in using it or redoning it?
Not really, Bob, because you're gonna have redone it with both the eration tanks and also the secondary clarifiers. You don't need it for sludge storage because you're in good shape there, yep.
What do you do during construction with the ditch? Continue using it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so that whole, absolutely. So that whole plant's gonna run as it is right now, Jay. Except for like the secondary clarifiers, you always have to leave one of those operable. So we'll write the sequence of that. I mean, the town's gotta fully comply with your discharge permit during the construction process. That's the way it is nowadays. It wasn't like that ten or twelve or fifteen years ago, but you have to be in full compliance with your discharge permit throughout. So we run the plant as it is. And then, you know, once the new stuff gets built and operable, we'll get that online. And then we can go back and abandon those things after the fact at the end, so.
That's part of why they're being built off to the side too, so we can keep that ditch in service.
That's why I was wondering, what to do with the exchange with the ditch in between?
Yep, yep.
I think it's also important, Peter made a mention of the eighty-nine upgrade costs us about $3 million. The town's total, total cost for the town is $300,000. It's a big difference now.
Yep.
There's no, there's, that's positive stuff that's coming that you've given us, but it's not. It's mostly on us this time. There's no way around that. Or at least not significantly.
Yep, it is. But on the other hand, as we all know, the funding gets tighter and tighter. And, you know, we've talked about reducing the costs. You start losing grant money. You know, the funding package is pretty decent. And especially the good news with the interest rates creeping down too. And it doesn't get any cheaper as you go, as you go forward. You're gonna start to lose, you know, grant money or, you know, the interest rates are gonna creep back up at some point. So it doesn't get any less expensive moving forward.
If we find local grant sources, they would come out of that.
Yeah, so, yeah, it depends what it is, Jeff, you know. That's a bit of a challenge with USDA. So you can go out and try to chase some of these other grant sources. But if you do that, it can come out of the USDA grant because it's a federal bucket of money. There's a couple other things that we could wanna shake the trees as the northern porters. And everything helps, but you know, there's no guarantees on that stuff. And that's why the joint funding with the state, so they work together on that, you know, because they've got limited money and they wanna make sure they're putting the best funding package to the state. And USDA work together to make sure that they have what works. But, you know, the other funding, you can, it's unfortunate, but you can get more grant money and you end up losing it out of the USDA grant portion.
What makes the difference between a 20% and a 40% on the USDA?
Well, so you're eligible for up to 45%. If there was a health and sanitary issue, you would actually be eligible up to 75%. That's a tough one to prove out because, you know, for example, if the ditch failed, then you could, then you could make that kind of happen, make that case. But we're trying to be realistic about what you think are gonna receive for a grant. You're eligible for up to 45%. And that doesn't mean that you're not gonna get 30% or 32% something. But over the last three to five years with projects of this similar size and everything, we've kind of seen the average USDA grant at about 25%, Jeff. So that's really what we're just trying, it's estimated, but we're trying to not oversell, I guess, is a good way to put it and be realistic. And hopefully you get more. And if you do, that's great because then that just helps the increase, you know, reducing the increase to the sewer customers.
One thing we wanna make sure they understand is this is a project that has to be done. We can't, even if we were trying to put it off for a year, it just gonna cost us more money. If we have a breakdown in between, it's gonna, we're gonna be really upset then. I'm like everyone else. I hate seeing my bills go up. Unfortunately, if we don't do something, it could cost us longer.
I think our challenge is gonna be, that surcharge, even if you're up to $59 per quarter, is if we can find some way to help push in that, whether that's the potential 1% option or, or something else where that can get closer to $33. Because that's gonna be our challenge to get a yes vote for, on the need. No one's gonna dispute, there's a need. But water and sewer costs already are very high in this town. So we have to be, communication, this is the first step in, in the communication. Making sure everyone understands what that, what that really means.
Other questions, comments? I would say that we are having another informational meeting October 29th.
Twenty-ninth.
October 29th, Tuesday. It's a lot to digest, but it's, it's, it's something we have to do. And we haven't given up on different ways of funding it. But the first thing we have to do is have a, have a bond issue that passes. We can modify some of the, or we can augment some of the ways to pay it afterwards. We will be working on that. Because the bottom line is, right now, everybody votes on it, but the sewer, the sewer users pay for it this way.
Is there any information being nailed out or is it gonna be in the paper? And will the informational meeting be at the grade school or is it going to be in the school?
Grade school.
Why, why are we doing it here? How often do you get all the people in here that you wanna do for that?
If more people, if more people show up, we'll move it to the party. That's, that's not what arguing about right now. We can, we can adjust.
Just let me know.
Yep. When you were talking about the project, it's gonna be three years before it's completed. When does the actual payment start?
So it depends on the funding source, Jay. So if it's a state loan, it starts a year after substantial completion. So if we're looking at the timeline here. So basically, if we were looking at the state loan, it would be roughly the summer of 2023. Yep. USDA is gonna start quicker than that. They're gonna, they're gonna trip in about when you're complete construction. So that's, it depends a little bit about.
So you're still looking at three years?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yep, yep. That's right. Yep, yep.
So in the meantime, we could look at some other ways of putting some money, maybe getting some money aside. To put toward, so it comes time to do the, the actual payments. We can knock this, do knock this payment for.
Make it, make it easier. Yeah, yeah.
What, what does say 100,000 more in grant money or from other funding source can be acting to that help?
It doesn't do a lot, honestly. So I think if you remember the numbers, we were at a couple weeks ago, Jeff. You know, I think I, I looked at another 100,000 loan subsidy. It brought it down like two or three dollars a quarter, but not, not like 10 or 15 dollars. It's, it's, it's like, you know, one or two percent.
And that risk, that would risk of the, for the USDA? That in addition to what they're at or? You're saying, you're saying we're worried about, we're worried about the USDA. So are they gonna do a dollar-for-dollar subtraction if we get 100,000?
No, no, that was, that was if you found like some other federal grant source, Bob, yeah.
Or if we had, is there?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
So our mailer that's going out to everyone, does that have a timeline in there that says, for, for example, next one is, is October 19th. Please go in to be anyone who wants to walk around. And then here is October 29th. And showing, if, if we haven't already put that together yet, showing the timeline that we saw here again. It's saying, here are the key dates.
We don't have the wastewater.
We don't have the tour plan on there yet.
But that can be added in there. We've got it in Word. So, yeah, there's a schedule. So this is really just a summary, kind of synopsis of the, of the slides here.
There's thirty copies there for you guys to go wild with.
And if anybody has comments or input on the PowerPoint presentation, if you get questions or specific questions over the next week or two, just let us know. And we can, we can tweak this a little bit to add or supplement if we, if we need to, so.
We may get some after it's settled.
Yep, yep.
You know, with people watching.
Sure, yeah. So just let us know and we can, yep.
So we started, we sent that out with the school kids last week. We've been handing them out with that transfer station. It's going out in the newspaper this week and then we're gonna mail it to every household.
Put it on our website?
And put it on our website.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying to get the word out as much as we can because people are innovative with this stuff. We just wanna make sure it'll be, I don't wanna hear, I didn't know.
And the Rowland Herald ran an article last week, I think.
That $59, anything chemical savings, labor savings, anything like that that might come up?
Labor's, yeah, you know, absolutely. I think with what we're looking at, I think it's realistic to say probably the bigger ones are gonna be some, like the electricity. And if you're looking at the wastewater treatment budget, you know, typically your three or four biggest line items are obviously labor benefits, not necessarily in this order, but electricity, chemicals, and probably sludge disposal. You're probably not gonna do anything to the sludge disposal. That's gonna stay about where you are. But definitely you can do something on the electricity and the chemical side. Labor and benefits probably won't stay, you know, change too much because you get the same level of staffing to cover the plant and the pump stations.
Part of those efficiencies are with the screen. Another way that question was asked a little while ago, can we cut this down anyway? And one of the areas we're looking at the screen. And you guys could get some benefits from efficiency from removing things, not resigning to those tanks. So that was one of the reasons I really pushed back and like, it's, it's good to, good to have that screen in front of, for that specific reason.
We gotta have the bonds to 6.5 million, but we might not have to spend that.
That's right, exactly. And you're not anticipating.
At the end, we could see a difference in our.
And you're not anticipating, we're not even suggesting you're bonding for the full amount, but we're not even suggesting you're gonna even spend the six and a half million. I mean, right now you're down around the four million number.
We just wanna make sure that it's there. We gotta make sure we have it, hopefully.
The $59 increase doesn't reflect the $6 million bond?
It, no, it reflects the $4 million roughly loan payment.
When I saw the $59, it's still $66 if, the worst-case scenario is six and a half million.
Uh, no, it's a lot more than that. Yeah.
It's more than that.
Yeah. It is, yeah. No, so we're basing it. The reason you have to, and Julian, your bond counsel, when he put that together, they recommend that you bond the entire project cost. And it's written, so it's subject to reduction in grants and aids. And part of that reason is we don't know exactly. Again, USDA can't issue a funding offer until you have a positive bond vote. But we're trying to make our best projections on our knowledge and, you know, what we see for similar projects to provide kind of a realistic, conservative picture here for everybody, Jeff, yep.
It's the full project. It's just not you guys paying a loan on the full project now, right?
Yeah, that's right. And that's why it's important to say, you know, we're projecting or the estimate is out of that, the town's getting roughly two and a half million dollars, you know, in loan subsidy and grants. And that, that's a realistic and we hope it's, hope it's more. But I don't think any of us wanna sit up here and say, you're gonna get three and a half million and then you don't get. So we just wanna paint a realistic picture here.
I understand it's hard to say, but so probability that we get a little bit more is great. What's the probability that we get less? Or is this conservative enough where we're all worried about?
I feel it's conservative. I, you know, Misty Sensigalli from USDA, she, she offered to come to the next public hearing to speak to that. And I had a discussion with her last Thursday at the VLCT show. And she thought that that was pretty real, pretty realistic as far as the minimum baseline and what she thought the town would get here, Joe.
I know it's hard to say.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We will see you again. So we will conclude the informational session. We're back into our regular meeting. Which means we need to approve some.
Plug. I might have to, I might wanna tell them to pause just in time.
Very second?
Oh, second, yes.
Propositions, releases, what can happen? All of the fair?
It's just, it's nothing, but I'll show you. Unless, unless it's.
Unless, unless it's. We need to come outside out. It's just the end. I can send you a first.
So Claire noticed that there's an end where there's an end on page two. It's a little bit off there.
That's okay.
Department head report.
Get your book up a minute. Got some more back together. I thought I was going to get them done today, but it felt hard to do. The more did. So, but the more will be done tomorrow. Ingrading the roads. Doing, got some, getting the other snowboard road one back together. So I'm going to try to run two snowboards this year on the sidewalk. Hopefully do that.
More than there.
Been dealing a little bit with the sidewalk and shoulder. I'm talking about that. Got to park for the pump on the sewer truck. That'll be back today, tomorrow too. Where we can start doing ditch basins, ditch basins and stuff. Cotton trees. So, and they're going to, I got a letter from Joe. They're going to shut down the train trussel for the tracks on the 21st. I think it's the 21st.
Where'd you shut it down?
No, no, this one, this one. Yeah, they did that one this week. They're doing this one on the 21st. I think it's the 21st thing. I think it is.
And that one's on down there now?
South Main, yeah.
On South Main?
Yep. And I'm putting them out through on Swamp Road, the detour. So.
Profect street to dump?
I don't know if we've done yet.
I don't think so. It's always on by Saturday.
The South Main Street, next week or next month?
No, it will be a week from, well, two weeks from today, right? The 20th, 21st, we're starting on the 21st. So, and there's a question I need to ask you guys. I, I need to, either we got to put a lot of money into Jack's truck or we can get a new one. And I can put it in my budget. I don't have to make, we don't have to make a payment for a full year going forward. So I could work it into this, this coming up budget. I got a couple quotes in National, Western Star. Western Star is the better, the better truck. Because we have to buy it. In National, you have to buy an extended warranty. So by the time you add that in, the price is quite a lot higher. Either, I did two. I did a ten wheeler and a six wheeler. The ten wheeler is about forty-one thousand a year. The six wheeler is about thirty-four. So.
Can you give us a breakdown of what is going to pass the fix to the truck?
I got it. It's on Joe's, it was like twenty-five thousand.
But what's, what's the major project with the problem?
Well, the plow's bent, the pusher's bent, the frame's tweaked, the piston on the bodies needs a new one, needs a new sander.
Just, and I don't want to take this wrong way, Sam, but is it up normal wear? Or driver operator error after we spend a whole bunch of money for a new truck? I don't want to be buying a new truck and smashing them up every time you turn it down. And that's, that's so.
That, that, that person is going off.
So I guess in my book, the question I was getting at, we get that, hopefully we're, we fixed our problem with individuals that were just beating the heck out of the equipment.
Yes.
And the only other comment, I, before I would come down one way or another, I want to see some figures. But if you're just giving us a heads up, thank you, heads up. I want to add.
I gave it to Joe. We talked and he's going to do a little work tomorrow.
Thursday. I'm going to sit down with Sam and hammer out the specs on this. Like Don said the last two times, like make sure the spec is clean, send it out so that way it's apples for apples. We don't, this is a lot of money and we want to make sure everybody gets the fair shakeout.
Well, we can't set a truck we can't afford. We can't afford another vehicle. That's what that, I know, I know we're in a situation, but we spent so much money this year on equipment.
Yeah, but we're not going to spend it this year.
But we're still spending the money for the next four years.
Right, but.
And I mean, it's just somewhere we got to, I understand you got to have equipment. Somewhere or something, I think we, maybe we do something between get a used, get a used truck or something for now or anything right now, just to kind of cut back a little bit. Because this is a lot of money and we've already spent a lot of money for equipment this year. And I'm not against buying equipment, believe me. But we're, we're to the point where we're kind of really, we're to the end of our rope.
Sam and I will get some numbers together and then we'll make it. I'm with you. I'm paranoid about spending it, so.
But I mean, I just, I just hate to take money to put into an old truck that's not going to give us any money back. I mean, right now they'll give us eighteen thousand dollars on trading. Five years down the road, it's going to be nothing. And we've dumped all this money into a truck that we're not going to get the money. I mean, I realize, I realize that we've spent a lot of money, but I mean, it's one of those things where I want in this, and if we do it now, I'll have my, I'll have my rotations set up so I can pay for this truck for five years, keep it for seven. And my budget is going to be flat. It's not going to be up and down, up and down, up and down all the time. It's going to be right straight across the roller. I can keep my, I can maintain my budget better versus throwing money into something that's.
I think Jay's right. I think we just need to see side by side and see what we got and what the potential is. And I don't think it's a bad idea to throw in a use, to see what that does to it. And if that's viable either. I mean, we need to see a reoption. Even if, even if a used truck is forty thousand or forty-five thousand, we get three years of it. And then you can still keep it and get a new truck or whatever you have to. I'm just, I'm just looking long range. I mean, I'm just trying to see the best way that we can get around this without getting any more in debt. I mean, it's, we're getting hit with a lot of things here this year. With a sewer bond coming up, we don't need to have a big increase in our account back. What's the mileage on that truck?
I don't know. I haven't even said it, Jay.
Well, let's see what we can do.
Was damaged, was that recorded at all? If you go back to the insurance company?
No, that's, that's the, excuse, that was a stupid thing.
That's not the one that hit the.
And it should have been taken care of right then. Because it bent the frame, it should have been.
I thought that was big.
No.
This is the same truck that hit the mobile down here. Smashed the plug, hit mobile three here. And the damages was done. If we'd have known then, we could have taken care of it.
I mean, right now, my ten foot plow, my ton truck, cuts the biggest loss than that twelve foot plow does. It's.
That, Jay.
It won't even float down the road.
Well, then we need to.
I know, I know everybody, I understand this, but. Something, something, I got to do something. That's, that's the biggest thing. I got to do something. And the truck is ten years old and just been hammered on.
We know you're inheriting a lot of stuff there. It's just, it is, it is overwhelming that.
I understand that.
Give us the numbers, we'll go from there.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get some numbers on a used truck. Do you, do you want a six wheeler, a ten wheeler?
I don't think we need ten.
Six wheeler.
I mean, it's not, it's not that we have that much, that far travel. We don't do any of our own collar material anymore.
Probably not going to fit in the fire.
Well, it wouldn't fit in the fire.
Right.
Probably anything fits in the fire.
I can fit.
Well, I mean, for what we're going here, for what we're going here, we don't.
Well, we have to take the flowers off anyway.
And one other just odd question. The tree guys for, bring out power up, trimming around our place just over there. And is there any way to get a schedule out of them so that you can trim behind them rather than in front of them? Because you did a couple of weeks of work up there. That might have been covered by what they're going to do.
Oh, really? I didn't, when they were with?
They're there now. Uh, there's a flyer and they've been driving around. And they went up towards water plant. I, I don't know what they're doing exactly. I just, there must be a way to put that together.
Probably. Who is it? Who's doing the tree work?
Spony or whatever, however you say that.
Oh, okay.
That's one, that's one.
The big, orange, orange truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can go up and talk to him and say, what do you?
It just might save you in the future.
On your flyer, there's a name for the.
There is, I'll get that for you.
That's, that's who you got to talk to. Because I have the same thing on the high line across my property. And they do have a schedule.
It's more like next year, we're going to, we're thinking about doing these three places, really cutting them back. Maybe they're coming through. They can take a little weight off.
That would help.
Anyway, tell me the name.
Anything else? Anything else?
I, we, I don't know what you. I don't know. I was just, I was just curious on the, on the salt shed. If we could do it ourselves versus waiting, going down the road.
So there, there is a bit of thought that says we can do it ourselves faster, cheaper, just get it done. Which, I mean, maybe that's true, maybe it's not another question. The state's given us almost a hundred, more than a hundred and fifty thousand. And we're working through another grant that will pay the match of that. This, this is one of those points where I feel like, in all respect, this is one of the let's chew ourselves in the foothold. We can decide to give some, yeah, we can decide to give some money back so we can build it ourselves, maybe. Or we can just do the process. It's going to take extra time. It will, it'll take maybe a year, maybe a year and a half, but it'll get done. Or we can maybe do it ourselves with our money. So it's up to the board. You guys can spend or not.
But the other, I mean, I don't think our salt shed is going to last another.
Rather use two of them. I understand the concern, but I, give some numbers.
I, I. Guys, I have to disagree with that.
Yeah, I know. But I, I can also, I can also see Sam's point.
That shows been there for fifty years with the last one here.
And you have to do some, some kind of makeshift to fix something to cover. Okay. Well, here we are arguing about trying to bring some tax dollars down. And we're going to be talking about for the nights over here, any money we can save, we should be saving here. If they're going to, if the cost to us for salt shed is zero, I don't know why we're even discussing it for. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Now, that, that grant, we don't have to pay back. That's, they, they give us that money.
That's our money. There is a match, there is a thirty thousand dollar match. But we have another grant that will hopefully come in in February and match that.
You can't build it for thirty.
Show me, just show me. My great, great remembers and, and I don't want to be ten years later coming back with thirty thousand dollars more for the salt shed in the place so personal. Because so far, I, my confidence level that we can do it and get it done right is not good.
That ain't, that ain't so much of a.
You're on the salt shed.
I think.
Keep our fingers crossed.
I want to see.
We can get another year of the salt shed we've got. We had to do some maintenance on it, fine. But let's, let's, let's go through our process, what we're working on right now. And see what we've got, see what we get, get through this year. I mean, we, like I said, we keep getting hit with everything here. We can't keep doing that. We got to, somewhere we got to do something different.
Spread it out a little bit?
Yeah. I know it's a long process, but I would rather spend the state's money than increase a tax company.
Is that a consensus or what?
I think he's going to try to get your numbers.
A lady this morning said something called Pine Street. There's a lot of holes again that we can hit before, you know, get some hot.
We've been talking for three weeks about the potholes on Pine Street. And it gets worse and worse. Now, I don't know what it's going to take. And my only comment on that, when I start talking about my confidence level, it's not real high. We'll go fix potholes on Pine Street and drive right by potholes on other streets because we didn't holler about it. We're going to go fix potholes. Let's go fix the potholes and have it done. I watch us fix potholes down Carman and leave, we're on fourth street or one of the other ones. Leave a huge pothole running in. Mustn't be that wasn't the street we were told to fix. I don't, and I'm not blaming you saying, I'm just looking at it saying, I think we're doing, we can do better, we're better than what I've, what I've been seeing for a street repair.
You haven't been around here last week, have you?
But that's no excuse, because we don't repair anything is no excuse. Not.
We, for our head right now, we have been for a long time.
But the worst part about that Pine Street, that's only got an inch and a half of asphalt on it. That, so I can, I can patch every hole every day. And when it rains, it's going to have an hole. So do you want me, do you want me just?
Didn't bigger issue for us than we should have found the money, gone in and paved Pine Street this, this summer. And probably spent a little less money on equipment than we spent. We could easily have paved Pine Street. So I mean, I don't, again, I don't mean to be getting, Sam, I know you've got, you, your group are working hard. I'm just saying, I look around at a lot of jobs and I see the jobs half done, not fully done. And.
No. He's still putting out fires from years ago, so.
I understand.
They're keeping up with what they have to do.
But when it, when it comes time to my budget, try not to cut any. Because I need it all.
And that's, and that's, that's the whole thing is where the priority and where we put, where we put our pavement budget, it's all, that's what it's all about.
We'll, we'll talk about the project.
And I, I actually, I think, Joe, did you get two bits for favor?
I, I did. I, I did. We did, uh.
I, I put them out there.
Yep.
So.
But it's, uh. It was supposed to be fall paving, but it's, it's too late for paving.
I was, I was hoping.
I wouldn't put my name on paving right now.
I was hoping I could do it in this month, but.
Again, not to beat the dead horse. We got taxpayers complaining that they're bottoming out every time they go down Pine Street. It's a high-usage street. I don't care if we have to fix it every other week, fix the potholes.
I don't, I don't think they're bottoming out. They're not that bad. They're old, but they're not something, something to bottom out.
That's not credible.
Glad, glad I hear. We'll take care of it. It's, it's, I mean, Sam's heard you and.
No, I, I.
But, it's, it's on me. We'll make sure that gets done. We'll make sure, we'll, we'll check it every day if it needs to. I understand. It is high traffic. I get it.
Anything else? You're off to a hot seat for a while.
October fifteenth, we're gonna start switching cars out to the other one that we got in July. The, we're looking at a date for the food drive again this year. Um, we're looking at November first to the ninth, one of those weekends. I just have to confirm and get in the, the van from the sheriff's and the city.
Done deal.
Um, I did put a copy of the, of the proposed ordinance that Mr. Brown requested. I put it in boxes of the shooting ordinance. That ordinance never went anywhere. I could not find the, the one which I believe Mr. Brown was talking about. I couldn't find a copy of the original that I thought was ordinance from early two thousands.
Wasn't there another directed one?
There was one somewhere. I just can't find.
I think, I remember going to the.
Fire and destruction.
Yeah, so there is a copy in there to look at.
Oh, there you go.
Um, again, that was, it was back, if you look at the names on it, what year that would have been, it's like more on the board.
That's one that Bonnie put together anyway.
And that was basically a carbon copy of the one that we thought was an ordinance?
Yeah, that's, this is right. This is right, that.
Yeah, it just never got approved.
Right.
I know that Warden Sterling was here and had lengthy discussion with the board, and they choose, I think they chose not to take action on it back in the day. I think Jeff was on the board then.
I, I was.
My question on that ordinance myself, was that to include compound bows and bows because of the problems we've been having with someone practicing in the backyard and putting arrows right into lawn furniture?
That was two thousand eight or, I don't remember what year that was.
No, that did, that just happened just recent.
Well, that's just an idiot.
Yeah.
That's, that doesn't, we're not gonna make, we're not gonna make ordinances for idiots.
No, but I, when I saw the firearm destruction ordinance, the question I asked was, because they've got, bow and arrows are no longer those little bow and arrows. They're the ones that they, they're no different than a gun. They're shooting right through their targets, going right into the next driver. And, and if we're going to look at this ordinance or actually accept it, my recommendation is I would get, uh, compound bows and, and.
Crossbows.
Crossbows put into the ordinance.
Well, that was just, it does say something about, uh, spiritual.
That was just supplied to you as, as a request from one board member. I didn't review it that much. I just remember it came up. And I remember it was a lengthy discussion in front of the board back in the day, and no action was taken.
No action.
But there was one that, similar to that, and it was actually on Town Letterhead and had the town thing cross it. It was in our ordinance book, and then we found it was never acted on either. So, I just don't know where that one went. But that was a similar copy to what we thought we had for ordinance.
I've got that in our ordinance book. I'll look at it and see if that's in there.
Well, I think what we all should do is take a look at this. It's, it's, uh.
I've got some changes.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that are, you know, and I, and I actually. The airport is in this one.
I think so. Yeah, I didn't spend a lot of time.
And it says, it says like five hundred feet from, from the handle residence or something.
Well, it also has a place for speed shooting.
It's gotta save the armory.
I'll make motion.
We put it in our parking lot here.
Let's take a look. People are complaining about speed shooting up there now?
I didn't do anything.
It wasn't Jeff complaining about speed shooting, but they're up there shooting in the, I think one person was shooting in their woods, which there are people that aren't that good, so.
You know what? It's always been a place to shoot. Oh, has it?
I think that's why this.
One, one hundred, five hundred fifty.
I think that argument right there is what brought it down.
Yeah, and I think that was what Warden Sterling had talked about, was the safety zone was established, and then there was a five hundred feet.
Right.
On efficient games rules, and I think that's why the board, again, didn't do anything at the time. Because that, that was, was over people, um, sighting their rifles at the, at the airport at the time.
And, and. Yeah, maybe the best thing to do, well, talk about, let's, we're gonna table, we're gonna table it. Yeah, that, that was your, okay, second, all of the fair.
And the only other thing I have to, actually goes with that is I got contacted by, um, Warden Sterling, coincidentally. He was looking for a key access to the, um, airport. It's hunting season. He wants to be able to access in and out. It's locked. Now, he can't get it back there. That is one in his patrol zone, so. And that would go with the five hundred feet rule. Give him the option to go in.
Are we, is that closed now? I think a little gas, I don't know.
North side is not locked.
It was not?
No. Was that supposed to be there?
I thought it was. Three months. Are we, why, why are we?
That's been open, Joe, because they've been up there flying their plane.
Yeah, because the kids are coming in tearing up the, tearing up the grass. I just had complaints.
No, they open it every day, and they go out, they close it and hang it.
The other side.
The key's right on the, on the end wall, right up the top.
I'll get a key. I'll get a key if, if that's okay with you guys. He can just put it around his truck, and that way he has it when he's.
Right there. I'm a little worried that it's closed. There's a lot of old guys that go up there and sit. There's one old guy drives up through there until he doesn't have to, when he burns. And I don't like the idea. I would prefer, frankly, as long as we're talking about that, that the gate be open and that my person open, and you guys patrol it.
Guys, we can't get it.
I know you can't win it all the time, but, but if people know you're up there, they'll stay away. Get, but anyways, that, that's where it's every time.
Yeah, we get as far as the gate, go back. We can't access any further.
Well, that's a show.
I don't think we have a key to it either, so that's something I need to get, put on the car rings. Um, that's all I have at the moment.
Uh, okay. Very quickly, update on the, the water meters. Uh, last time we, last time I gave an update, I said we were about forty-five percent done. We're actually a little lower than that. We were closer to forty percent done still. Uh, we are actually up to forty-five percent complete. Has hurt bad this afternoon.
Uh, the.
We got a whole bunch more than yesterday.
Yeah, they were, the guys have been killing it. The stack is getting deep. Um, there's class, uh, class action lawsuit going right now for this opioid epidemic. The town of Fairhaven is involved in a class action lawsuit. Um, they reached out to me last week. We can choose not to be involved, or we can just not do nothing and stay involved. Does that make sense?
Not a red one.
You mean they're hopped down or staying?
You can hop down or stay. Right now, we're in. Um, if we stay in, there's an estimated amount of about eighty-five hundred dollars coming to us. Um, if, if all. Um, is John got that one? Yeah, John. Uh, Scott Hill Brewery says thank you to the town of Fairhaven and the EDC for their nineteen thousand, uh, dollar grant. And I received a letter from Judy Wuskowski. She says she, uh, thanks, saying thanks Fairhaven, um, for confidence in her, but she's going to resign from the board's director from the, um, rescue squad. Uh, she has recommendations of either Mr. Gall, Sean Gallin, or Bridget Stockwell to take her position. We'll put that on for the, the next meeting.
I think we should advertise that.
Recommission.
And put it on for next meeting, but that's kind of something we should advertise. I don't want, there's a lot of people that are interested in that.
You're gonna advertise that in the next two weeks, that time we invite a meeting, or do you want to go on?
I think we can get it, you can get it, and it's something in the paper for Friday, tomorrow, for Friday.
But you have to have it done by Tuesday, today, so no. It'll come out the week after that.
We've got two meetings. That'll be, three solid weeks, right?
It's both strange with some of the people.
No, no, I tried to pull the string, it got bull. That's what you're here for.
I get along pretty good most of the time.
I think you advertised it.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that we'll get anybody, and those two people are, are good people, so. We're, we're golden, but I just wanna make sure that it's transparent and.
Um, so, uh, in your boxes, Wayne and I, we went to, Glenn, we went to the VLCT town, town meeting, town fair. And, uh, we got the idea of a way to supplement potential funding for this wastewater plant is with the one percent optional sales tax. Um, this is something that VLCT told me, says we put out a ballot, the town would vote, yes, we want this money, the sales tax money, go directly towards the plant. And for the sunset of, when the, when the bodies paid off. So, people don't think, just trying to, you know, try to weasel in and legalize your tax money. I'm working with VLCT and the state on that to bring with some options.
The other thing to bring with us too is potential, um, revenue.
Revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't, I didn't have any.
No, I know, I know, I know.
We're, we're in there.
I think that's all we got, though.
One thing, I got one question.
Sure.
Have we had any qualified applicants for the open position or everything?
We have. I had a gentleman come in today, very well qualified. Uh, I reposted it again, though, for the rest of the week and Saturday in the Rotten Herald, just to kind of get something out a little bit first. We have, we have three applications with, you have three applications.
What's the position?
This is the, this is an equipment operator.
Okay.
On that same line, Joe, post a position, you know, we talked about Peter's replacement that we want in February.
Yep.
So they can spend, is he leaving July first?
Yeah.
Uh, so do we get six months overlap? Uh, I, I can tell you that November, December is great for it again. Most people don't plan on moving or even committing to go until the first year. February's gonna be here before we know it. Uh, I.
So that, that ad is done, and I sent it to Peter yesterday, just to make sure I'm not missing any job descriptions, um, or any critical things he does. So, yeah, as soon as he gets it back to me, which will be Thursday now, it's going in the paper. I, I hated to advertise that too far in advance. I feel like there's a sweet spot, and I felt it was like right now. I don't wanna waste money. I could toss it out.
There might be money well spent.
True.
Cass, Cass and Foley were a bust?
Um, Castleton was a bust, Foley, um, you might have looked at Foley, but I think. Yeah, I can ask Foley.
You actually got a mail from Cass?
I got a, yeah, I got a note from Castleton, and I know a guy, and the guy didn't call me. So, it's like, oh, okay, not interested. Uh, and that's, yeah, that's what I got for you guys.
Old business, maybe go down to nine B.
Yeah, that would save.
What's that? Scared of going to nine B.
Yeah, we can.
I don't have a phone.
I'm just looking for the one.
And we are, we can keep the tables, we read through this, our biurector is, it's not favor of us at all.
You have the guy here.
Oh, yeah, we, we brought Officer Gia here to.
I still say we should read through this before we discuss it. There's places in here, it's, it's, it's all on the town. Every bit of it's on the town. Insurance, everything, insurance of the cars, the, everything you get on through, all of the taxes, all of liability factors, everything according to this is on the town.
Which you normally pay anyways. Those are all normal, normal expenses.
Because it's outside our work schedule.
But you don't pay any more insurance for any one of those cars to be on a governor highway safety detail.
If a, something happens out there, it's on us.
It's on you if it happens on you.
It's not, if it's not up to replace itself, it's not, it might not happen.
We're not out everywhere else.
I explained, I explained last time I was here, that the town has reimbursed point five eight zero a mile. In ten miles, you get five dollars and eighty cents back. What's the cost of a gallon of gas?
All it does is, all it does is subsidize what these guys pay us. So, if they wanna work for you guys, let them go up and do it for you.
But seriously, Jake, if they are subsidizing your, their pay to make your street safer, where are we? Why is this wrong, I guess?
I guess that's why.
You know?
That's why we, the police department, take care of our streets.
And that's what our supplement is.
Here's, here's another thing, Jake, in light of what happened last night in Roland City. Usually Fairhaven only has one officer on it at a time.
I don't, I don't think that's true.
At times, okay? When somebody's on governor's highway safety detail, they're in a uniform, they're in a marked car, and they could be somewheres in this town within one to three minutes. Let's now consider they have to ask for backup from Castleton or Rutland. How long does that take? Last night, or the early this morning, things went bad in four minutes. Everything went bad, you know, and thank God there was multiple people to be there this morning. But if the same situation happened in Fairhaven, would there be multiple people at, at five thirty in the morning or seven o'clock? You know? I, yes, I'm pro highway safety. The map I passed around explains why. Fairhaven has had a steady reduction in crashes in the last three years. And it's because of their efforts in highway safety. And as I explained the first time here, I'll still carry that banner. Uh, one less fatality is one less fatality, you know? It doesn't just affect one person. It's a bunch of people. Uh, secondly, I've looked up Fairhaven for equipment grants for the last several years. They've gotten seventy thousand dollars in equipment grants. So, seventy thousand, maybe it's nothing. I don't know. I think it's quite a bit. I know we do, and we get a couple of watch guard cameras. We think it's pretty important. And they worked at the critical times. The critical times for highway safety are, are well-known to be two to six in the afternoon and, and six to three at night. I mean, those are the critical times for this grant. What I stand by what I say is that you have one additional officer on duty who's in a uniform or marked car and ready to go. I think that's important. I just do. In this day and age, things are changing. They're not getting better.
Hopefully, that's what's covered, and we can cut back on the car force.
That's supplanting.
No.
That's supplanting. You can't use governor's highway safety to cover a shift.
No.
It's not about cutting back. It's about, and I explained this before, we can't provide the level of service we provide with the money you give us. I have fifteen thousand dollars in part-time money to cover vacations, six-day holidays, and open shifts. Can't do it.
Right now, it's costing us nineteen thousand dollars a mile in this town for protection.
For what?
For protection, police protection.
Nineteen thousand?
Nineteen thousand a mile a year.
How do you figure that?
Figure it a budget, figure, there's twenty-six miles of road in town.
You can't figure, you can't figure a budget by that.
I'm just telling you, that's what it's costing us right now.
That's, that's not an accurate reflection of what I think these are wages. No.
Well, it's my first time to look at highway safety grant. His, and we've been, and I support highway safety grant, but been in it since two thousand six. Did anything change in, any substantial change in the grant this year than what we've been getting?
No, it's the same, same language, same verbiage. Yes, you have to have your cars insured. Yes, you have to have workman's comp. Yes, you have to, you know, have this or that. It's standard. It's what you have for a normal officer. It just carries over. In fact, the overtime covers the overtime costs, the FICA, and the workman's comp. Yes, covers all three of those. So, what's the cost to the town? We get mileage after that.
And, and the last time you came, you saw. And the last time you came to us, if I remember correctly, you said that they try to, when you do the, whether it's the seatbelt or the sobriety check, try to have them out in this area, so we're not.
And I come out, usually, usually we come out for those campaigns and we try to hit every town. And the idea is that we all work together. I know the Fairhaven Select Board doesn't really like the Fairhaven Town Cars to go to Rutland or Killington or Danby. I understand, and I get it, I mean, I don't agree with it, but I get it and I understand it, because I have to cover 28 towns. You know, so I have to go everywhere. You know, and towns are getting more restrictive on leaving their town. I get it, I understand that. At the same token, I don't want to be, you know, that person that has to send two deputies to Fairhaven on a Friday and Saturday night to do enforcement and DUI checkpoints. You know, I like to see local chiefs handle their area. I just, I don't, and then, Dan, if he has a problem, he can dial me up and say, hey, we're having a big event and I need you to come over. Okay, guts of tea. What's the percentage of time in town as opposed to, I don't know, for our guys, for our people? You're almost 100% in town, except for the click it or pick it campaign, I think.
Well, I didn't leave town this year.
And he didn't leave town this year. The other question is, we're always putting a part-time on at that point?
Not always. Sometimes it's, if it's overtime, I know the sergeant will work occasionally, I work occasionally.
Bill, we had a part-timer working 40, or 65 hours a week, or 65 hours of paid curries last night. We got that up to you, and we stopped it.
I was filling Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, which I was allocated for on the grant. And it wasn't a matter about the officer, it was a matter about him being over, because he was classified full-time if we ran him all the time. The town manager was aware of that we were doing that. And it was because I had one part-timer that wanted to work, that was, that didn't have a job full-time, so he was available to work. That's why I was using him, but those are the nights that, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday, depending on, are the highest statistical related crash DUI-related times.
We should have just hired the sheriff's department to have a vote.
On a side note, it scared me, just because of union and contract negotiations and everything, to have somebody come on that's working more than a part-time. That's not this argument, it's just.
Yeah, no, and I wasn't aware of that, and then when the town manager pointed out, said there was questions, and that's why we were not doing that. That's why I wasn't aware. On occasion, if there's an emergency with a sick time, I can go over that 20-hour window, or stay under the 20 hours if it's a, I mean, but it can't be set schedule over that.
Right, I'm just saying that the union will come back and say, you have another full-time officer.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to avoid, and that's.
That's different than this.
Yeah, that issue's been.
How many weeks does it take to set that precedent, they become? We've had, we've never had it with police officers, I'll say that. But we have, we got hurt badly in the regular workforce, in our DPWP people, so. I've never run across that, that's why I was. Well, you know, it was no good details, unfunny. That's a famous saying by EPW commissioner.
So I just want to address it, nobody's out trying to tap your pocket. And I've done what you guys have asked, and we've had this protracted discussion over it. I had one selectman last year that kept hearing we were out of town, he came in, looked at the sheets, the town manager gets the sheets, Jenny has the sheets, you can see where we patrol, I have tickets to show. Obviously, we went and did the checkpoint in Polton, I told him we were going, but I didn't, like you said, you didn't want to know where the checkpoint was ahead of time. We went down, did an hour checkpoint or two hours, and came back here to meet the checkpoint thing. Other than that, we're not, we're probably like 98%, 99% here. And I have, I have paper proof to show where we are. I mean, yeah, on occasion, we go up to Main Road and turn around, and I'll stop a car right there if I come back through, coming across the line. Yeah, I might stop a car there. But I have tickets to show, they've got us, and everybody else now, basically, if you stop a car, you gotta have a reason why you have a verbal. They want a written. So we have documentation, very few written warnings or verbal warnings. Yeah, if you stop a volunteer fireman, route to a call, they don't have time to write him a ticket. Here's your verbal warning, you're going too fast, or, you know, or something like that, you may not write a ticket, but but we're getting now, or we're keeping track of our base data, all comes for that, we have to report to the academy every year, it shows that we're bias-free. So everything is documented, I have everything to show, and to hear that we're doing this, just come in and look. I have nothing to hide, it's all black and white. He's coming in, audibly, once a month, everything's there. If you have listed 12 tickets, you better have 12 tickets. If you have three warnings, there's your three warnings. I have photocopies of everything, we changed policies after last year. Everything's there. Again, I'm just trying to implore you that this is a tool that we can use to address problems that we can't do with the money that you gave us. I had the sheriff help himself say, he looked at our budget, I don't know how you run it for what little you guys have.
Don't expect a lot more. You sure you can't give a little more? Used to, used to be a sign over a treasurer that I've worked with for a long time, and it said, "All expenses are evil," and he meant that too. Oh, there. We can beat this to death. What is your pleasure? Do you want more time to look at this, or do you want to make a decision? It's all up to you guys.
Didn't we have the highway safety grant to the red that we have, did it run out July 1st? So we're behind?
October 1st.
October 1st.
And we've got, we've got some, the Halloween, our Halloween campaign coming up pretty soon, we have to get out of court.
So, I want to be, I agree with you, I'm fine, but if we give members of the board who want to read through it and look like standard legal leaves that they can get for most, most grants, that didn't look like anything earth-shattering, that's different. Either you're for or you're not, and we've had this discussion multiple times. And so if someone thinks, if more time would give someone an opportunity to get more comfortable with that, I'm saying, fine, get more comfortable.
The only thing that I saw change was they required a texting policy, and we already have it done, I just have to institute it, it's already written. For us, there wasn't mandatory seatbelt this year, they've added that officers can't text and drive. So I amended that policy already, and we're just gonna, I mean, that's gonna be implemented probably this week. Use a horrible.
What's everybody else think? Then I entertain a motion.
Makes no difference to me, because I'm gonna be all voted anyway, so it matters.
Then I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To accept this, to be as part of the grant.
And I'll second it.
Any more discussion before we?
Roll call vote?
I think it will be anyways. Okay, all those are favored?
Aye.
All those are closed?
No.
No. 3-2, you're on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you ever have any questions, feel free to call me.
We will.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Chief? Thanks for coming in.
Is that a four and one?
Four to two.
3-2.
Four to two, yeah.
Four to two is six, and there's five of you.
I would agree with you on seeing double.
Yes.
Yes, no, yes, no, yes.
Yes, no, yes, so it's three to two.
Long time in here?
Yeah, we're, yes, you're the supervisor. With the, with the help of Bonnie or Bonnie, we put together an anti-baking, no smoking policy, for the park, well, for all the parks and playgrounds. The significant changes on page is, line 14, page 3, but everything else, if you see a highlight in there, that's just language being clarified. There's no change in ordinance, yeah.
Right, so this is gonna stop the smoking on the back porch.
They should be so many feet away.
They had to be minimum 25 feet from the building.
There wasn't a sign up there, is the sign still there?
No, they still smoke in the back porch here all the time.
That's a management issue, I'll take care of it.
Thank you. First thing in the morning?
Uh, Thursday, because I'm not here tomorrow.
25 feet, thanks for the.
From the building.
That's what the sign said, I think it could have put 50 feet.
The most important thing too is, on that, I can't find my policy, but, is, is, doesn't make any sense in a place that has, you know, is servicing the public, to have cigarette smokers right in front of the door, and in the way to the door.
Actually, that's no smoking, should not be allowed on any of the, what I call the ground.
Sorry, I can't find that. But anyways, where are we on that?
Wait, what was changed here, don't be ridiculous. So is it any and all illegal drug, smoking, vaping, and the use of smokeless tobacco products are strictly prohibited?
Yes.
That's the new part.
That's the new language, and then the highlighted portions were just clarifying places, there was no change in ordinance.
So, just to add, what this change means, concert in the park. People go to concerts in the park, and they talked earlier this summer about being the other side of the fountain or whatever, there's no smoking, period. Vaping, anything, anywhere in the park, and the other.
Yeah, we shouldn't be smoking down at the baseball stadium. Like, can you, at the baseball stadium.
How do you, how do you monitor and deal with the smokers? Make them spit?
I'll just wrap it.
Start an infrared, give a back row.
It's a gentle reminder, you know, that if you are there more than once, you know, the same, the same police officer is going to have to take it into his consideration.
They mark your tires?
Mark your shoe.
Mark your cheeks. But I don't know, you know, it's, it's gonna be, it's, they're, by the nature of it, you're gonna see.
Listen, Jamie, I'm also, I'm gonna second it.
Sounds like it's partially unenforceable.
Enforceability is difficult on this, yes.
It's gonna be.
People will get the message.
They'll get the message, and that's what we need, and if there's people that are blatant, they will.
With the ordinance, you could tell if they can. Stop it at the concert section, in ball fields, and on the back porch.
I've never seen anybody smoking at concert.
I have, but I will say, the ones I have saw, see, they were wiped out. They were, or they got up and went out by the coverage station, but, you know, it just.
Now, is that something I gotta put signs up?
That's what Jeff was just mentioning, we might have to do something, yeah.
We're not putting signs up, are we?
No.
That would be my.
I said, I miss it, is that, if there's signs, we're wired.
We're gonna have to.
People know somewhere. I think just if during a concert, Fred's gotta do his announcement.
He does.
No, he says.
We'd appreciate.
Every Thursday night, he says, no smoking.
No, he doesn't.
He says, he said, we'd appreciate that you're.
On your neighbor. He kind of. All he's got to do, just mention.
He just got.
And I'd give him a little grace period, because this is gonna take a little while.
There's gonna be some people that are gonna.
But you just gotta have something, you gotta have something.
Yeah.
The word, this ordinance will have to be published anyway, before it goes into effect.
So this is an ordinance, we have to put it in the newspaper, and then give the town residents their time to be able to petition, so it's not gonna go.
We still have to do that.
Yeah, still, we have to sign it.
I was gonna say, you have handouts for concerts in the park, and for different things, you just add that wording at the bottom of that handout. That, that, anywhere in charge of whatever, and you also communicate another way, just before it's right in front of you.
Did you forget one thing, though, Joe? That guy with the clear chest shirt, no shirt, and the snake hanging around it?
Yeah, no snakes.
Was he vaping?
Snake was. Okay, all right, I think we're following.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, sounds like it was unanimous. Thank you.
Is it 60 days before, after you advertise, or clearly?
It says 60. Shall become effective 60 days after. Now, does that have something about 45?
Does that include all town? In our plan or petitions?
Just in the, just the.
In parks.
In the park and recreation.
Is there a senior policy on smoking in town vehicles?
Yeah, the guy shouldn't smoke in the, in the shop or in the vehicles.
No smoking, a lot of drinking.
Exactly.
Be beneficial for a long days of snowblows. Okay, we're moving on, abuse policy, policy to death.
So this was recommended by our new insurance company, VLCT. It is, this is, really, there's nothing, there's nothing we really don't already do.
You know, the only thing I thought about that is that they designate a difference by how often you're, you are with children. As opposed, so, one, you don't, you don't go through a full screen, you don't have to look at everything, and then, one, you don't, you do. I don't know why we wouldn't, if anybody's, you know, why we wouldn't assume that they would have, and they wouldn't assume either, that they would have to go through a complete background check, and it may be cost, but I, I don't know why we wouldn't. And that could be just something that we do, whether or not.
I know the sex offender check is free. You can just go online, bang a name in, pull up, get a printout, so that's, you know, that's an easy thing, and you can do that for everyone.
What's the insurance policy? What's the insurance company?
Take account board.
Are we ready to make approval of this?
Go ahead.
Wanting to approve the abuse prevention policy is presented.
One second.
One second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Capital budget review. So this is, this is what we put together, reached out to all departments, and put this together for capital budget. It's substantial, no doubt. The yellow, the yellow highlighted are things we're already paying on, everything else is our wishes.
Capital budget reflected in this sheet?
And so.
Do you hear my question?
I do, so in your budget, there is a proposed, I think, $35,000 added for equipment for DPW and lemon change, I don't know exactly, but lemon change for the police department. Other things would be, you know, through wastewater and water, so there's a little bit of money in there. It's not.
What'd you say? No, no, you were saying this that we were looking at. Never mind, I'll get that.
There is money in there for this, yes.
This is all reflected in here?
Not entirely, but there is money in there for that.
So, for the lucky here, seeing my first capital, but when?
We're all seeing it.
Oh, okay, so we're all seeing it for the first time.
That's a market difference.
Because I looked at this, and I said, well, it looks like we started with $180,000 and finished up out there at $157,000, so it looks like we started high, and then worked your way back down.
Why, why don't we have a list of the reserve accounts in this? It's, in your financial, do you have a list of the reserve accounts? Then you get that every couple of weeks.
So if that new truck, I'm sorry.
Pull that one out.
Go ahead.
No, I just want John to reply.
All they're trying to do with this is tell you what you're anticipating for equipment replacement in the next term. And how much it's gonna be, and what it looks like to you, physically.
So then to answer that question, that new truck that Sam was talking about, is that in here or not?
It is.
It's in here.
But, but, is this reflected in here?
There is. So there's thirty-five thousand dollars for DPW in the budget and there's eleven thousand dollars for police cars. The police cars are completely funded. DPW has enough to buy their truck.
How, how far away from funding this plan completely are you in this budget? That's the question.
Thirty-five thousand dollars for this year. The sidewalk claw has been replaced and that's ten thousand dollars. Um, the international's in there at thirty-three thousand and then the compactor for, uh, for future replacement is five thousand. So that's all. As a budget, you're short thirty-five thousand. And that was anticipated to just keep it under three percent.
So what do you not buy?
I don't buy anything.
No, no. What do you, what do you prioritize outing here on this list, right?
We took advantage of fourteen thousand five on fifteen thousand dollars.
You know that, right?
Fourteen thousand.
Yeah. Let's stay on this, please. We'll talk about the budget as well.
Just, I think this is just kind of a guide as you guys are going through the, through the budget. You can prioritize adding more or less money for equipment. But this is what our department said they needed and the time span they seem they needed it.
So this is a combination of what we've already got encumbered and some that we don't.
Yes.
How do I tell what we don't by looking at this?
So the yellow or things you're paying for right now?
Uh huh.
Which, they will be budgeted. Those are budgeted for already.
Okay.
So you're paying for that. That's a payment. The new Bobcat has already been bought, just above that first yellow line.
Uh huh.
So that's already been bought. We can strike that out of there. Um, but everything else is, is, is there's no payment, but there's a little bit of money. Does that make sense?
Well, I just love when I connect it.
Is there a way to put a line in here at the bottom and just say, this is what would need to be added to the reserve accounts to make this budget work?
To stay on track.
To stay on track. Does that make? And list out the, the reserve account separately then. And then that should match this last page here for the allocations, right? If we fully come to.
I'll figure something out. Cause the.
Or you can just figure that out.
Joe, what we're looking at here, though, isn't necessarily money put into a reserve account. The yellow lines are actually payments that are in your budget. It's not a reserve account.
Like the nineteen ninety-eight.
We got twenty-seven dollars left when you cashed up on it.
Finish your question, Joe.
There's still allocation out of the budget.
Right.
There, there weren't line items out of, out of this budget.
These.
Right.
No, those are line, those are actual line items out of the budget. Those are payments you're paying right now.
Yes, we are, we have a not out of this. Not out of like the actual public works department, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, those are actual payments coming out.
Okay.
Under debt management. Yeah.
Is that there or is, is it in debt management or?
It's under debt management.
That's what I'm saying.
So you'll see it broke down for payments and then interest on the things that are already purchased.
It's down here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, does this, does this nineteen thousand reflect what you need here and it's thirty-five thousand short?
Yes.
But it might not all go there. It might need to be in the reserve or.
Yeah, yeah.
A line item.
Or a line item. So, yeah.
The other question. The other question. If we bought the Bobcat, should that be tricked and?
Yeah, that's coming up.
So that means that we're only twenty thousand.
He did that much in his head.
Well, you got the.
Tells me that the, right, I'm with you. So practically thirty-five.
Right. So we're at twenty-five thousand.
That were in the budget.
That were, we're, we haven't budgeted to, to make this work.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so there's.
Cause that gives me money for your truck. Do I want to torch?
Well, there's, there's, so there's thirty-five in.
Thirty-three.
There's thirty-five in the capital reserve right now in this budget. There's still for the DPW equipment reserve, there's thirty thousand in addition. So that brings you up to, what, sixty thousand dollars? You have, you have thirty, thirty-five there. Now you're asking for thirty thousand dollars more to add to your kitty, to your bank account, plus five thousand dollars for a compactor. So you're still, you're still pretty shallow. When you look at that, that, I know it's, I work with this every day, so I know the numbers. But when you look at the back page and look at this, it's kind of a job.
Well, no, that was gonna be my own, but, cause when I looked at this and then I, there, there was a reserve account page and then I'm going, well, okay, what?
Yeah.
Well, what I anticipate is, is that we will be back and forth with this in the budget. We will, we'll be peeling back saying, how, how can we get closer to, I mean, this is a good exercise. It's a great thing. And, and I, I think the first thing we have to agree on is that we are going to follow, and, and we are going to.
On both sides of.
We agree, yeah, that we agree that this is how we should proceed. And then, then we go to the budget and say, how do we get to that point?
Well, what I'm saying, on, on both sides, Sam's gotta agree that these are the things.
Right.
For the next ten years.
And you don't, we don't come into the meetings and say, I need this or.
And I'm picking on them.
No, no, but I, I. Set a budget up and play.
But that's, that's what I, that's what I wanna do is set my budget up.
But then I.
So, so from, from this budget on, that we're talking, it's right straight across the board.
Yeah, and we're actually, we'll be talking.
I mean, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have an increase, cause everything's gonna go up, of course. But.
Yeah. But it, it, it's, it's legitimate. I mean, it, it shouldn't.
We bought a little too much in one year, so it's all going up. But if we could stagger some things a little bit, it doesn't need to.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But right now, right now, if we, the payment will be a year out. So, so from that year on, everything is gonna stay about the same. Lot is gonna fall off.
In five years or something.
Right. And then the truck's gonna fall off.
And you're gonna buy a new one. That's, that's the problem.
But, but the payment's gonna go down. It's not gonna be thirty-five thousand.
Maybe.
Cause we're gonna have a better trade-in. See, our, our trade-in's gonna be better. So the cost is gonna come down. The payment's coming down. So in all reality, by my third truck, we shouldn't have a payment at all. In reality.
I agree in principle. I, I would break, I would just break these out, like this nice master and then a second page that says Public Works, Police.
Fire Department.
Fire Department, Water, Sewer. And then they'll directly correspond with the reserve accounts or the accounts, for the debt accounts with them. So that we can better.
Yeah. While you're going through the budget, you can better.
We'll be able to tell. That makes sense.
Good for, good for passing.
You're saying more.
Yeah, just match it to it. So that when we look at this real quick, we can tell, oh, we, we need thirty-five thousand to make this work for Public Works. We can't get that. We can get you twenty-nine. Where's the four thousand, or five, six thousand we're gonna take out? Just makes it a little simpler than Joe. Well, I think that one's there and that one. You know what I mean?
I do.
Otherwise I'd like it, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time we've ever seen anything like this. So this is, this is, you know, the planning, you know, the next.
I set my budget up and.
Good first. The next thing we wanna see out of you is a ten-year program for the roads, for which roads are gonna go, you know, which roads are gonna do. That kind of stuff. Anything that we can plan ahead. And that's just came, I mean, that's the first thing.
Can we, no, or we, can we try to have that done before this budget's up?
That would be nice.
Or is that too ambitious?
No, we can, I mean, I can make a phone call and have them come and say, look, what's this gonna cost me?
We must know linear footwise, right?
Yeah, it's pretty close. It's about, what is it, three bucks a foot?
I mean, three bucks. That would get us close enough for a budget.
Three, it's three something.
I got some numbers from Wilkes-Lownd. He gave it per mile.
I was gonna say, I saw that they made some numbers.
I was gonna, I was gonna get with Sam and break it down using our.
I think the miller is, I think the miller is seven bucks a mile or something like that. Depends on your depth of, of your miller. Of course, the shorter you take, the less it's cost. Payment's the same way, less you put down.
Would, would it be, and you guys may have heard, thought about this, but would it be possible to look at taking, uh, quoting for like short-term bonds? Ten-year bond or something like that, do twenty, twenty-five percent of the roads, the, the remaining roads, every, for four years? And not putting any paving in, but taking the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we put in for paving, earmarking that as bond repayment, repayment. So basically, hopefully not having an increase in the budget, but getting all the remaining roads done and between all the runs, roads that we've done in the recent past. And these four years, i- in my scenario, could be five years, whatever. Uh, we, we then get on a just recurring, uh, we get our feet back under us.
Right. That's, that would be.
I don't know what the payments, uh, I mean, someone would have to do the math to figure out how much of a bond we can afford for the, for the hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I once, I once wanted to put a bond issue out that, that, uh, we would set a bond for if we were paving road, we would do all the infrastructure underneath before, before we pay. You can't do that.
What?
It's against the rules.
Really?
To do what?
Well, it's not a bad idea.
Do a bond to cover it.
To take a bond issue, have it sitting over on the side, and if you do.
No, but don't even sit it on the side. Just have them just say what you need to do.
Choose and do.
Choose and do. Cause he's giving you what you need to do each year for four years. You plan all that.
Yeah.
And add it in.
Well, yeah, but.
Now, if you're gonna.
You can't sit on, you can't sit on bond money and spend it at the way, the way it was.
Like a whole night.
Instructor.
Right.
You can't, you can't sit on money and just wait to use it ten years down the road. Anyway, we're off to something a little bit.
But on that, on that note, if you was gonna do that, now, do you have to put that out a bit, out to be important?
Yeah, so you would have.
Or you just have a working.
That may be the, no.
I mean, to me, I'd rather have a nice working relationship with somebody for, say, five years. Say, look, this is what I got, next five years.
You may be able to do that.
Come in.
That's worth looking into. That's worth.
The way you're doing business.
I mean.
It's, it's not.
You know what you're getting.
Yeah. And you're used to those people, yeah. I don't know. I don't know why you couldn't, if, if you were very specific about what you were doing. But anyways, let's get back to this, the, the capital budget. The, um, the next thing on the item on the list is the twenty-twenty-one budget I would suggest.
Cemetery.
Oh, the cemetery, did, did I? Yeah, I'm sorry. Let's get that through.
Make a motion to, for lots sale to Gina Goodrich. Lot ninety-eight north, section seventeen, one grade.
Grade four? Yes.
Okay.
I hope so.
Lot ninety-eight north, section quarter seventeen.
Thank you.
I second that, Carl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
We've never.
Yeah, it was a little rude.
Well, yeah.
One time, uh.
Oh, okay, I do.
Maybe it worked.
V I R G E N A. V I R.
Okay.
Oh, V? Oh.
Bridging here.
The, the budget? Does everybody wanna have some time to plow through it or do you wanna start plowing through it or what was your intention for tonight?
Uh, I figured tonight you guys would take the first look and I really didn't expect a lot of discussion, to be honest with you.
So you gotta like the bottom line.
Can we address, though, the letter that they put out in front of the budget? I had some questions.
Okay.
Rather than the actual.
Yeah, that's, that's not a bad idea.
There, there was, uh, there was the one where, and it was a nice summary of things that you did or didn't do. But I had some questions around. Uh, the first one I highlighted was the increase in department, uh, Public Works and Police Vehicle Reserve Funds. After listening to all the discussion, I am a little clearer now of why that went up. So it's not as, as much. But the, the other one was, uh, it said, uh, under, well, the next to last bullet under this budget, you'll find a completely eliminated roadside ditching, street sweeping costs because we do it ourselves. And I, I looked at it, I said, well, okay. Uh, we didn't do any real sweeps, sweeping that, I mean, we late, late in the game, but our, our, our streets, uh, were, it was later than I, or I, I, I corned. It wasn't as high as some of the stuff we had down, on the side of the road down, down through there. So I'm going, okay.
The track?
Oh, yeah. All I'm saying is, but it sounds like we had a budget. We could have somebody come in and do the sweeping. Don't have a problem with taking it out. I just want to see it done next, next spring. And that means, uh, I'd, I'd love to see when we're talking work plans, I'd love to see a work plan that says, okay, here's what plan I'm doing. And here's, here's, uh, March, April, May, and which, you know, what projects you're gonna do. You know what the manpower you need. You know the man hours. You know what you need for equipment. Uh, I just think we need a little more structure, quite frankly. And then there was, the last item I highlighted, one was for there, is reduce the paving by additional ten thousand. Our paving can't afford to be reduced. I wanna add more.
Paving was increased by ten thousand.
Reduce paving to only an additional ten thousand.
Ten thousand from twenty-five thousand.
I upped, I upped it thirty-five thousand.
And, and what, what is, what does?
We do a hundred.
What does twenty-five thousand get you?
No, it's not. We, that's the increase.
Oh, you had a hundred and seventy last year. You have a hundred and eighty this year. That's all it means.
Okay.
And I don't know how much.
So, so what does that get, I, I, where the question I'm getting to, for what we have in there.
Three hundred.
If, if it's only gonna do one or two little streets, we don't have enough in there.
Well, it's, so we spent a hundred and seventy to do West Street and however many miles, how many miles?
Mile and seven ten.
So you can.
So we can do, we can do, we can do quite a bit with a hundred and.
Eighty.
Eighty?
And, and to, to be fair enough, front, uh, Sam did add thirty-five thousand to that paving line. I went through it. I had to take, to get to that three percent. Uh, I had to take a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars out and I started cutting everywhere I could away from DPW. Finally, it came down to what am I gonna cut? And I can't cut salaries. So, so somebody, somebody had to lose a little bit and everybody lost. Everybody lost a little bit this time. But there's still an increase, just not as much as we wanted.
Okay. And then there's some things that aren't in the budget.
Yeah, and then there's the thing that we didn't, uh, the server's still not in the budget. That's seventy-five hundred. Uh, Vinny did replace the hard drive last year. It's still a bit, what, a seventeen-year-old piece of equipment. They should've.
Servers?
I'm sorry?
Next to servers all of a sudden.
Yeah, I mean, it should've been replaced about fifteen years ago. Um, but the, the computers are still in there at thirty-five hundred because the money is short enough. I felt we could leave. That, you know, that's the key point where people are accessing the internet. Right now, there, there are, some of our programs aren't even working because our, our equipment is so old. We, I was looking forward to putting a little bit away for painting, cause the outside of the building is, yeah, the softets are just rotting away.
A lot of work there.
There is a lot of work there and about forty-five thousand dollars worth, but we didn't put any in.
And we got some sliver here. Get off there, too.
Well, there's some general maintenance, but we still do them. But the larger things, it's just, we wanna keep the budget down. These are the things we get to just eliminate.
And the last one is when it's on the bottom where the overall, you have to keep it below three percent. Was that keeping it below three percent, taking into account the appropriations that always get voted in in March? Was that keeping it below three percent taking into account the appropriations that always get voted in, in March?
No.
No. No.
It was still.
Because, I mean, that, that, if you, if you take and put another hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, into our budget.
That's not something we can control.
Well, that's, because we say yes every time for everything that goes through there, it's something that we should plan for when we're budgeting to say, three percent is not.
We have it on the back page.
Not good enough.
Three, three percent, so three percent is the increase that the, that's our operating budget. Your overall budget with appropriations as they were last year.
Seven.
Is at two point seven percent increase.
My overall budget is at two point seven.
That's with appropriations, cause the appropriations are so much. People might come back and ask for more money than what they asked for last year.
Well, you know the EMS is.
Uh, yeah, they're gonna come, they certainly.
More than nothing.
We're pretty, we're buying us, really afraid to put them in, and have a financial report given to us.
Yes, and every, every year we ask for the financial, we don't get it.
No, we didn't.
We don't know that, we don't necessarily put it in the.
Market.
No.
In the, in the town report.
I think, I think we got hung up, and we could not put them in just because of that.
Right.
Right?
I think we, uh.
I think that was the bigger one.
I think we should have a financial report for the rest of the lot, in time to go, before we go request for the town report.
I think it's a legitimate request, and I, and.
People wanna see it.
What's going on now?
People.
Absolutely.
Well, it's taxpayers' money, they should be, they should see what we're doing and what's being spent on.
Exactly. The problem was, it's an appropriation that they requested by petition, we can't stop it because it doesn't end.
No. But we can still ask for a financial statement.
And we do.
And we have no teeth, that's the point, the point is we have no teeth.
Is your, we have no teeth then?
I don't know.
Are there guidelines for what you can ask for appropriations for, and are we following those guidelines, or did we get extremely literal? Let some of that.
Is there a way we can say?
No, if it's, if it's a petition, you know, if it's a petition.
Even, are there some guidelines of what appropriations can and can't?
No. What, what we did was. What, what we did, if you recall, we, the people came to us and said, we'd like to skip the petition.
Right.
And we said, wait a minute, no, the petition is the only way we can hold your feet, if people ask you for a report.
Right.
You, you tell them that you don't wanna give it to them, right?
Right. And then we asked them, we asked them to come to the, to the town meeting.
True town meeting.
And, pre-town meeting, and people don't usually show up either. Some of the people who are more conscientious of, uh, for instance, the senior senator, Castle, and that. Yeah, they're good, um, but there isn't a lot, it's worth asking if, if, you know, you're in Florida, you got ten minutes to kill. Call P L C T, yeah, yeah, I know. Uh, yeah, call them and just ask that question, you know, is there any way we can put more teeth into getting that?
It, it seems like everybody wants to petition together, it's.
Yeah.
Appropriate money, and these are, the times, uh.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, those people, those people usually probably were funded through, um, you know, the, the, um, what's the, what's the one that you said, what's the? No, the, the, the funding source that everybody donates to.
United Way?
United Way, and that's way back, that's cut way back. It's something these people aren't.
Oh, they don't get, it's not that they don't need money, but I'm just.
Yeah.
They've cut down who the, how much they do.
If they come to the town fair event at any, for anything, they're gonna ask for money. That's, you know, so it's meals on wheels, damn it, whatever it is. And they have the right, if they get the petition.
But there are some.
But it's still, it's still a good-looking budget, or a good-looking bottom line to start with.
First, first pass.
Yeah, you know, we're probably gonna add money to some of this, it's just where we take it out.
I don't know, I, I, I'm gonna go one by one, I've got something I wanna take away.
There you go, good.
And, and, but, but only, and I use my, my gains for taking away, and that may hurt, just. I, I listened this year to a lot of people come in and say, I need something, I said, oh, let's find it, find the money, oh, now I have it in the budget, so it sounds like either they were very frugal with their budget, which it could be, or budgets were a little, could've been a little more generous than to, on, for example, well, for example, when I look at the budget to see what we did, we had quite a bit of money earmarked for like tree removal, a lot of lime painting, and there were, there were, there were projects in work that money was there to do it, that didn't get dumped.
Well, so you're gonna, you're gonna find that that's, they're, they're a lot better than there.
That's the one that's gonna cost us upon top.
Yeah, but you're gonna find that, that some of the stuff, then, for instance, tree removal, isn't all for tree removal, it's all for if we run into a emergency, as well, so there's money there budgeted that we may not use. Doesn't mean we don't have to re, re-put that money in, we can just.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't want to sound like I'm throwing stones, I'm not, I'm just saying, try and understand the numbers I'm looking at.
But at the same time, when you get to the end of the fiscal year, you probably should take the tree down in the park that needs to go. If you've got that.
There is one there, we're not.
Right?
Well, we're not talking about.
No, I just said. So to that point, though, it's, the guys, I know DPW was, were within six hundred dollars for the budget.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
They, they were, they were like, I, I was sweating bullets, um, so, eh, cut, I don't, I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're hitting bone, but I, oh, you're the bone, you guys, you guys did.
That'd be crippled in New York.
That'd be crippled in New York.
Let's, let's move on, let's assume we're gonna spend.
We need to.
The quality time of this budget next time, next meeting, and start, start thinking about extra, extra time. Extra meetings, meetings that are solely dedicated to this, so we can.
Who are you, are you going through the whole budget next meeting?
I don't want.
Should all Department heads be on notice?
Well, next, next meeting, I was gonna schedule DPW, cause they're taking dock in the room right now, they're sucking up our resources. Well, I mean, honestly, that year was a twenty percent increase.
You're gonna, you're gonna make, I gotta go, I gotta go.
I'll do what you think of.
All right, let's do that. Does, I mean, if that works, we're gonna concentrate on DPW next time, and you know, see how that works.
Out of curiosity, does this budget include any, anything, any part of the two requests that you got tonight?
No.
No. They were asking, they were asking for budget to be put into the operating budget, I, I, I think there's enough money to, so the grant match, uh, we only used like seven thousand out of a hundred and something thousand last year, and if we get a grant, that money can just be easily transferred out of there if they want, I, I don't think you need to.
No, and it, it may be, it may be something that we, uh, we do a, a regular, just a warrant, warrant item, you know, if they're, you know, fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars. Or one, uh.
Right.
Where, depending on what we come up with, we've got some time to do that, but a lot.
I think, I think the biggest thing is just finding some money at post that everything's okay with.
Yeah.
It doesn't cost thirty thousand dollars, you know?
Yeah, yeah. All the ones with, that, that was kinda fine, the guy that lasted, but we have some money to.
I mean, like I said, I talked to Danny, and we, he's trying to figure out.
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna go back to my original thing, I would so like to see departments lining up in the budget. Well, we're gonna put a part, yeah, police department, public works, every other county does it.
No, they really don't, only, only council.
If you get a part, when your budget goes down, it's a hell of a lot easier to work on just that particular part.
Only councilin' does it, anybody.
I don't know why everybody's so against it.
I think it's a terrible idea.
I don't, terrible, I don't think it's.
Because people won't go to vote when they know they're gonna spend.
Five dollars.
Than a half an hour.
Five line items, that's all it is, it's five line items.
No, it isn't.
It's public works, police department, department, and municipal. It's not like you're breaking it all down, it's just.
I thought you were talking about doing.
No, you're just doing public work so much.
I still wish we did it at the town meeting.
Yeah, so, so the town, so the town employees.
I know what your argument was, I still disagree.
No, I'm sorry, it's, it was wrong, we got a whole people to go on it now, but they couldn't, everybody can now, that's involved.
Um, let's move on, unless there's more. Um, smoking ordinance, paving is done. Capital budget we've talked about, recreation abuse policy we did, uh, we didn't talk about the oil tank, I bet we'll talk about that.
Can I ask a question?
Salt should.
Do you have a cost on replacing that, taking that out and replacing it?
Yes, we got a cost from Harper伐木 materials, eleven, eleven thousand dollars for removal and closure in place, and an additional line for tanks to be put in the basement, as opposed to just burying it here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, there is ten thousand dollars in the budget to cover a payment. And we can go up to five years.
Okay.
It probably will not be ten thousand dollars, but I didn't wanna shortchange that. I talked to the state today, and we're working through the application process here.
How do you get those tanks into the basement?
Big hatches, they're, what do they call it, five hundred and fifty gallon tanks?
Oh, just a bunch of.
Yeah, they're gonna be three, yeah, nah.
So you're not gonna have the same story?
It's not gonna be the same story, it's just gonna be three or four tanks in the basement.
Sure, three gallon tanks?
Three, it's out there, three thirties.
So we're not gonna get as good a buy-in final fuel as we got with the single fill?
Well, if we put it out to bid, and we, it, it might be a little more, might be a little, probably not less.
Well, we won't have an oil spill.
Yeah.
Exactly, our oil leak, totally.
Yeah.
You realize you have to put wall all around these three tanks.
Okay.
Just build a canyon.
But that's, I mean, that's good.
It's easier.
Anything else on the, um, on the parking lot, if you wanna add, subtract, or talk about? Okay. Hearing none. Glenn? Roundtable?
And there's one other, I, I just wanted to stand this update on the, uh, the complaint we got from Furnace Street, Water Daniel Street. We talked about possibly putting a test hole.
I bought, I bought three drywalls.
Sidney?
Sorry.
Jay?
No, we're talking about drywalls, we went, I talked, I talked, and putting drywalls in, five, the last one was on board, everybody said it was illegal, you couldn't do it, so. I don't, I just, well, up once, when we were going Second Street, we were gonna put drywalls in all the area, and we had to have all this stuff down there. They said it was illegal, we did something.
They, they are for a septic tank, you can't put a drywall in for a septic tank.
Well, this is back where you're going Second Street, so, I hope it works, I mean, I'm all for it.
So that's what I was thinking about the septic, which. Anyway, let's find out.
We can do this. I, as far as I know, but I mean.
Joe, have we got any proposed tax sales coming up, other than the one we just had?
We haven't had any tax sales yet, but Miss Ash Cross property at Twenty-four Washington?
Yeah.
Twenty-four Washington, is that right, that property we'll go up and sell at the end of this month? This is the first one we're doing in-house, so we wanted to take this loan, get it, get our ducks in a row. After we get our feet under us, we're gonna start doing two or three at a time, so that way we can get through these properties.
And this one is gonna be, start when?
It's at the end of this month, I don't, I don't know the exact date.
And then next thing I have, the mechanics do side lock, anybody could look at that, and, uh, where any shards we got?
That's.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Yeah, I didn't even think, yeah, so, um, Jay, uh, Glenn, myself, Sam, and the architect went up, uh, we did look at it, and there are, we have seven, seven spots at least that are underwater, uh, I reached out, the architect said he could do something with the degrades. I reached out to the state to let them know what was going on, and told them, you know, we don't wanna pay for this. She came back and said, well, find out who's at fault, and make them pay for it. So, at, at this point, I mean, we'll see what the architect comebacks, come, comes back with, but, um, I'll reach out to them, but I can't see that they're just gonna say, yeah, here's twenty thousand dollars. If we're gonna get any money back, I can see this moving towards litigation.
Let me tell you what the architect said. And I said to him, we're not paying for this, he said, well, then tell the lawyers to talk to us.
So we, well, we are under budget, right?
Yes, we're two hundred and something, oh, the, so the, the grant itself, the, or, yeah, the grant itself is two hundred and something thousand dollars under budget. If we do wanna make any changes, we, we could make the change, but the town will still be on the hook for the twenty percent of that change.
Right. Well, it's, it's not our, it's there in shape, it's not ours.
Well, yes, I agree. I guess my thing would be to say.
It's the engineer that returns on the job. It's the engineer we had on the, on site, and it's, it's a contract. I mean, come on, we're, you can't, I took pictures of it.
Yeah, I, I, what were you gonna say?
What I'm saying is, maybe they wanna pony up to twenty percent, and fix it now, when we can get it cheaper for everybody, and get it done. It's just a question to ask.
That's, that's the direction, yeah, that's the direction it was going, it's like, look, you guys are gonna have to pony up our money, cause we don't wanna pay for it, we, we didn't do this.
They, and that whole, that whole business of lay of the land, that is absolutely unchallenged, or innocuous. It's ridiculous.
But it's not lay of the land.
It is, oh, it's low, and what, and they, and, and right next to it, they did something. And some of those, I, I was up there yesterday, and it was, they did something, they, and then all of a sudden, it dips down, that's, you know, nobody does that, 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 it was a terrible job, they, and they let, they let that slide, and, and our clerk of the works, or whoever's there, is, is the guy that was here, he says, I'll tell you what this was, this was a grant, and nobody spent the time to do it right, they just, they, they penciled with this, and they.
They just knew they were gonna get.
They were gonna get their money, and they, and they spent as little time as possible putting this together, and it's, and never bothered, if they were gonna do lay of the land, they should've let us know, and we would've told them no.
Yeah.
You know, and this is a, just a terrible job.
I asked them up at the other end, in front of the school.
Yeah.
Nobody told us to. That was exactly what he said, nobody told us to do that.
It wasn't in the contract. Yeah, but, you mean that little.
Yeah, where the, where the kids come out and walk in front of the school bus, right?
I always thought, you know, I, I guess I was looking at the wrong thing, but I always saw something there, but, but the whole, all those little dips that are there.
I thought they were gonna build that side lock to the lay of the road, not the lay of the land.
There's nothing.
It ju, it's usually a doctor.
If they did it right the first time, it wouldn't have been a big deal. They would, and none of that would've been.
It couldn't get earlier than before, I didn't, I'm sorry about this.
Oh, I know.
It was ridiculous.
Well, I guess I, I'm just surprised the county didn't call us and say.
Yeah.
You know, before I build this, it's obviously gonna hold water.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I said, I told that to Bob, I said, why didn't you just call the engineer and say, look, this doesn't look right? Can we change this? Joe and I did, had a phone call, and he said, yeah, well. It solves the problem. Five-minute phone call.
Well, if you got a problem, talk to Jonas and his group.
Oh, he said, he said.
But the other.
That's what the engineers said.
Yeah, the other problem that we had, it wasn't today, the eighth, supposed to be the completion day, but I saw it, I walked down through, there's a ton of work, cleanup work for big holes, everything left, and nobody was working, today was a pretty nice day, you could've been working on, on finishing up that project.
And. Getting down.
And we probably have to keep someone's feet to the fire, or I don't know, for, before snow flies, what we're gonna do.
There's one spot down there, in front of, um, the first house on, coming up from Second Street, where he smashed the sidewalk, and there's a hole that big, and probably that deep right in Second Side Line. Why would he leave that? I wonder if it's gonna get hurt, or in the dark. One kid walking down, or anybody slipping, falling in that hole, he'd break their leg.
By a levee, sure.
Levee, are you sure? Levee, so.
You should put a cone there. He could do that.
They go.
It's just, all right, well, I got one thing, I'm not done there, I mean.
Well, let's just.
Just put it on the sidewalk, we now brought the drainage problem on First Street.
I know, let's finish this. Um, so the bottom line is, we are not going to accept, we are not going to pay.
Yes, and that's what the board wants, but it's, it's gonna be a constructive work.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay, Jeff, I'm sorry, I just.
And the First Street drainage problem was brought up, and we got another drainage problem.
On your fourth roof?
No, on West Street, where Phelps Street is, was out there, I don't know, four or five catch bases on Phelps Avenue, and on West Street, they went into one other catch basin, they can't drain anymore, cause the pipe was gone, it's just been, so water comes back up out of it, and falls down West Street, remember the drainage problems that I had, well, it's there again. Do you guys use your pump?
Yeah, no, I got, the pump, the part for the pump come today. Yeah, no, I got, the pump, the part for the pump come today, so we'll be out, back out there tomorrow.
Well, it's not, it's gonna help the pump that, help until the pipe that goes from that catch base and down to the castle rivers in here.
Is this where the house flooded?
Is that, that forty-two?
Yep.
No, I don't. Yeah, I mean, we looked at it with that young kid, but, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to dig up and see where that's broken.
It's a slate, wine, it's a slate built, pulvered down there, was.
Busted it up?
Well, this was at an executive session.
No, wow, it's, yeah, what happened?
You really wanna do it now?
Well, yeah. I don't know, I don't, this is the first.
What I don't understand is it worked until the house froze up and now all of a sudden it's a problem. Because it all froze up and busted.
Forty-two down?
Forty-two.
Okay.
Well.
Let's see, I'm taking a look.
Three is set with all, one bridge one, head down through. One to Glenn.
Okay, what's that say, it says we have, we have.
We're working on it. You got a main dam, a pump on there.
No, I'm just the right to do it.
So if we, if we have to repair it, we will?
Not a big deal, but my question again, why all of a sudden it's great because the water's coming? Because the pipe froze all the way back to the shut-off. And if the water line didn't, again, Sam put what, two hours of five-inch minus in the hole.
That was the line going into the house, what's that got to do with the drain?
Because the water froze and it busted and it ran out into the drain and collapsed it, all of that, all fell through, big holes in the ground all passed there and everything.
I don't know, I'll have to, like, I'll have to run the camera.
Yeah, just, just see what the, see what we're up against, I mean, laid-up slate, laid-up slate, uh, um, drainage. And it, there's a lot of it in this town and it holds up, even to a lot of, a lot of problems, so we'll see, maybe one finally gave up.
There's holes that washed out and it washed out through, all over the bank. It's gone now.
Now, down over that bank though, John, you gotta, you gotta remember.
All, all the dirt washed out, now it's a congress plant.
But years and years ago, you guys put that together with a chain and binder.
Why didn't you put it together?
But no, what does a chain and binder do in dirt?
Well, the, 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 the gals, the gals last colored it all together, now it's still.
But where that.
Chain and binder's still holding.
Where that washout is, I think it come apart.
No, it's come apart.
Well, let's see what we gotta do, let's, let's make it so it's not ruining any town property and that we still have a right.
That's what the drain looks like now, it's burned right. It must have a hole there, isn't it?
Anything else? That's it, that's it all?
One quick question for Sam, did you go back down today and look at that hole, was sorry to fire it?
No, he didn't come today.
Okay. Just a question.
I don't know. Are you gonna knock the door open? I thought you did a nice job on our road, I'm in the road side, thank you.
Now, the trimmer, let's go to the, well, aside hole, do it.
Thank you.
Hold it, you can fix it again.
I got it back together, so Nick will be out there tomorrow.
I don't know if you can line those more up with them.
The only thing I had, we talked about is the parking, uh, this parking, like the free parking, if we could start. Start finding options there.
Yeah, because, I mean, that was one of the things that was part of that priority.
Yeah, I, I, I really think that it, if we do that and we do it well, and we, it'll show what we can do downtown. And it'll be less resistant to some of the other things like, some of the other more.
There are some things we work with there.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the drawing with even the green space in there and the wood.
Changing the angle on the park side of the park, that's a big thing.
And I don't think we lose parking there.
No, we don't, you increase.
I utilized that, uh, that sub team that, from the revitalization committee as well to keep them, because they, they, they did a heck of a nice job with that pop-up. Taking ownership, make it happen, so, put them away, people that want to work, put them away.
Yeah, yeah, and that is.
I got one thing, your pop-up thing, are you gonna, wanna put that back over or you just don't want to put it away?
I'd like to have it back over, but no, we're gonna put it away, we're gonna, Sam's doing some laterizing when you got time, so it's not the most important.
I just thought you could put some vehicles in on it, so, I wish we could move it on the other side of the information. Yes, it would have been perfect there between the booth and the, and the car. But it was good where it was, it shows it can be moved.
And also, over there, you don't even need the system.
I also wanted, yeah, I don't need corded it up there.
I, I, I put it there, Jane, then your wife showed up and she said, no, I'll just leave it right there. I can move it for you.
I wanna thank you for bringing the barrels up and putting around, uh, I had a lift there, I appreciate that. And I think they're in, did you come pick them up or are they in the, they might be in the building.
Yeah, okay.
I can take it up, put it on. I'd like, I'd like to know who the guy who was that tipped them over, just so I could straighten them back up.
John's on, Johnny on this one.
That paint job looks nice, it's nice to see, it's nice to see people working on.
Yeah, all he does anyway.
Okay, but anything else, order on table, review, financial reports, if not?
Check it out. Five hundred forty-four thousand, five forty-nine, eighteen. Motion to pay the general fund warrant, hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred, twenty-one dollars and one cent.
All those in favor?
Right.
Those opposed?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and eleven cents.
All those in favor?
I'm coming.
All those opposed?
All right. That, the warning itself, that included the, that, uh, Bob Cap.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's on that, like, the highlighted.
I knew there was something I was supposed to make up.
Okay. Um, the next thing is an executive session.